So why don't we go ahead and take a roll and call a meeting and maybe Laura could come back? Maybe that's the.
All right, I'm calling a roll for Legislative Matters. Councilor Elkins.
Here.
Makes me wonder if anyone else on Zoom can hear.
And Councilor Perry is here. Chair, you have a quorum.
And Planning Board.
We'll do the same thing. We normally don't, but I think it's a great procedure. So Chris Day.
Here.
And Stacy. And down in the corner.
Yeah.
Good man. Good to see you, Sam. Marissa.
Melissa.
Melissa, but yeah, Melissa and Marissa. So we have five, so we have a quorum for the Planning Board.
Is there anybody from Planning Board on Zoom?
I haven't seen David. Thought David. Is he in the waiting room or anything?
I do not see him. No. All right.
I don't believe Jen was going to be able to make it.
Okay. All right. Well, welcome. Sorry about the little technical hiccup. We had a meeting of just Legislative Matters just before this. I was a little concerned that we didn't have our sound on, so I'm just going to say out loud, the Legislative Matters gave a positive recommendation to to a matter to assign two more spots in the parking garage to the parking department. So we gave that a positive recommendation. We're sending it back. I'm saying it out loud for the benefit of the record. I'm sorry if that seems weird. I think it was recorded, but just in case. All right. So as you might have heard, this meeting is being audio and video recorded. I'm going to open it up now to public public comment. We would ask that if you are here to speak on the either the agenda item for the joint meeting or the or what Planning Board has on their agenda afterwards, that you wait until those agenda items are addressed. So with that, and I'm not going to turn the timer on for public comment for this section, but but if, but you know, let's, I'd ask you to keep things, you know, speak with some brevity and and go from there. So with that said, is there anybody here or on Zoom who wishes to speak to something not on the agenda? All right. I don't see anybody in the room. I know, but then he put it down. So maybe he's here. Nick, or do you have, or you have something, want to speak on the agenda item? Are you? Okay. All right. Then we will move on past public comment. And the first item on our agenda is a public hearing on a citizen initiative zone change petition. And I want to.
I will make a motion to open a public hearing. Do we need that? No.
Yeah, sure. Yes. Second. Are we?
Yes.
Oh, hello. And we don't have anybody on Zoom, so we can do a voice vote. So all in favor of opening the hearing.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. I want to, just before we start, I want, I just want to make a note of, so this is a hearing on citizen-led petition pursuant to Mass General Law, Section, Chapter 48, Section 5, to initiate an adjustment to the Northampton zoning guidelines for the Central Business Gateway District. And it's a, it's a pretty simple adjustment. It's requesting that that in that section automobiles establishment that in the gateway, in the Central Business Gateway District, that basically car dealerships be moved from where their current allowable use, which is allowed by special permit from the Planning Board, to a no, which is to say not allowed. I want to take a, make a brief note of this measure and how it got here. It's, it's a very, it's not, I don't, I don't know how often this has happened, but the, the Massachusetts law allows in this section, that one of the ways that people can, can bring things and suggest a change is to get by 10 registered voters in a city to come forward with a proposed zoning change. And I, I do, I want to take just a brief minute to just say how lovely I think it is that, that folks in our city, that folks in our city availed themselves of this particular opportunity, organized themselves, brought it for consideration, and we can consider it. So it's, it's, it's a unique, I don't know. Does anybody here have any recollection of legislation being brought forward this way? You do? How long ago, Carolyn?
It's been a few years. Maybe 10 or 15.
All right. Very good. I am going to, I would like to start by asking Benjamin Spencer, who kind of spearheaded the initiative. Normally when we have legislative brought, legislation brought forward by counselors or anybody in the, you know, from the city side, they introduce the legislation. So I'm asked Benjamin to speak to us and just give us a brief introduction of the, of the legislation.
I do. So hi, everybody. My name is Benjamin Spencer. I am a resident in Northampton. I live on Rust Avenue. Thank you very much for those kind words. And I was very interested and excited to learn that this was a process that was achievable. It was something that I found out about from speaking to several people and asking a bunch of questions. And it was brought to my attention that this is something that had been done in the past. I was able to find an example of a previous version of this. So it was really a matter of sort of taking inspiration from that and recreating that and changing, you know, the language to address the zoning for the Gateway District. So so it was exciting for me to be able to engage in this way. And then to find other people who shared my concerns and to get that petition signed by other people and then submit it to the city clerk. And, and the process began and, and I started hearing back from folks soon thereafter. So that was very rewarding. Do you want me to speak sort of in general, what the intention of the zoning change is, or?
Very briefly, and then we're going to, I'm going to move into comments.
So just very briefly, there's a very clear description of the goals of a Gateway District that's here in the city of Northampton. That's available online on our zoning codes. And the Gateway District is in two places. There's a stretch on King Street. There's a stretch on Pleasant Street. There's a couple really excellent paragraphs that describe what the city would like to see in a Gateway District. What they hope that would provide as far as benefiting the community. And, and then there's a chart of what's allowed by right, what isn't, and what goes before the Planning Board for a special permit. So I am really hopeful that we can consider the information, the wording in the Gateway District, and also some of the other documents you find in the city with Sustainable Northampton and the goals expressed in Sustainable Northampton for what we aspire to. And that's, that's what brought me here.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think what I'd like to do is start with, with comments and discussion here from folks who are here to speak to the legislation. And we didn't do a sign up list, so we'll just recognize you if, when you come to the, when you come to the podium, and we'll go back and forth between the room and who's online. And so when you come to the podium, just make sure you say who you are and your name and, you know, where you're from. Okay? So I.
Hello, my name is Marcia Pelletier. I live at 21 Stoddard Street in Northampton. You wouldn't recognize me because I am new to Northampton. I moved here in 2021. But I was a school teacher for 50 years, and I also served in the New Hampshire Legislature for 12, as well as the county government. So thank you for your service. I know what that's about. I would speak in favor of the petition to change the zoning rules for the Central Business Gateway District to disallow selling, renting, leasing of automobiles, especially along King Street, because that's one I'm more affected by. But nonetheless, the other district is just as well useful for that purpose. I would see that this space be used as a mixed-use space for stores and possibly housing. If you think about the area there, it's on King Street, it's located kind of next, well, actually next to a hardware store. There's shopping in there. There's medical facilities down the, the road. There are restaurants. And it just seems like an ideal place for housing. And I think you could do that above some businesses as well and make that more convenient. And that would especially serve some of the elderly population. So thank you.
Thank you. So skipping over to online, I, the firsthand I saw was Craig DeLaPena.
Thank you for hosting this meeting. This is kind of an interesting thing because it's at the intersection of something that's going to be very, very notable. And I'm not sure you're all aware of this. I know many of you are, but I'm wearing a hat tonight. I live locally in Florence. I'm the president of the board of something called the Waddick Network. And we've been around about 24 years. And we reassemble the longest dead railroad in the Northeast United States into becoming a linear park that runs from North Station in Boston to Union Station in Northampton. This, this trail intersects with 18 others, including the longest interstate trail in the Northeast United States, which runs from New Haven to Northampton. Well, what's going to happen when this trail gets built out? We're currently at 60 miles open. In two years, we're going to be at about 75 miles open to get the completed done at about 104 miles east-west across the state. It's going to cost substantial money. DOT is figuring it out. There's several long bridges missing. But believe me, this will be completed. And what is it going to mean? It's not some frivolous little silly thing that's unsensical and non-meaningful. This is going to be very impactful. There's going to be four to five million users a year. Probably a million just in Northampton area. There will be four to 500,000 overnight visitors a year. Do we want to put another car dealership on our auto mile? To have the backend of an auto dealership, which is not the attractive side, facing where millions of people are going to be coming into our beautiful city and seeing the backend of an auto dealership? This is not about the entranceway from King Street. You can't imagine how big this is going to be. It's going to produce $200 million a year to the Commonwealth and the communities along the way here. And so I'll wrap up with this. If you would like me to come and do a formal presentation about what is about to happen here, I'd be happy to, but I want to give everybody else an equal time to weigh in here. Thank you.
Gentlemen in the third row.
My name is Rick Colson. I live at 15 Law Street in Northampton. And in my neighborhood, they are starting today construction of some low-income housing.
Can you speak up, please? Can you speak up?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. In my neighborhood, they're starting today the construction of some low-income housing, which we're in favor of. We think that it's a great idea. But they're cramming 20 units of low-income housing into a space that's really big enough for 12. They're not allowing enough parking spaces. The character of that development is going to change the nature of the street that I live on. It will triple the population of the street. It will at least double the traffic on the street. And all of our comments about that development have met deaf ears. So it's a frustrating situation, especially when there are areas of our city that are much more suitable to that kind of development. And the area that we're talking about is imminently suitable to that kind of development, especially for people that can't afford transportation. It's a very short walk from there to transportation and into town. According to LawInsider.com, a gateway district means a designated district located at the major entry points into a city. And they're designed to provide a sense of welcome and arrival to assist in orientation, to create a memorable image, and contribute to the social, cultural, historic, or thematic character of the area being defined. I personally find it impossible to see how an auto dealership meets any of those criteria. I'm curious if there's anyone from the dealership who's here today.
If you can just address your remarks to, to us here, the body.
I'm asking the question if there's anyone from the dealership here today.
Yeah.
Find out. Okay.
And, and if I can, if we can keep our remarks to the, to the agenda item, which is the, that the specific development is not on, on the agenda today. This is a question of whether or not the zoning will be changed to allow that use in the.
Thank you. Thank you. I understand that. The last question I have or comment that I have is that it seems that there was a great deal of effort put into developing a sustainability master plan for our town. And I don't see in any way how this kind of development is consistent with our sustainability master plan at all. And I wonder, I question, what's the point of developing a master plan? If we ignore it and allow these kinds of developments that are counter to all of the goals that are listed in that master plan? Is it a, is it a living document, or is it something that's just done for the sake of appeasing people? So that's my comment, my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have online Nick Horton.
Thank you very much. And again, I always appreciate the efforts of the Planning Board and the councilors. My name is Nick Horton, and I live on Prospect Street in Ward 1. And I am speaking in favor of the proposed amendment. This is an area, it's kind of the center of our community on both, of both of the parts and pieces for it. And there's the potential there for housing and other development that I think could be dense, but allow the space and connections that we have. I agree that Craig's argument of kind of how increased things happening as other developments happen at that rail trail connection, but in terms of bus and other transit connection within walking distance, I think it's incompatible with the larger project. So I, I again, would urge you to move forward and approve this initiative petition.
Thank you, Nick. Gentlemen in the second, second row.
Hi, good evening. My name is David Drake. I live at 321 Locust Street in Florence. Thank you all for, for hearing me. I was chair of the Historical Commission for a number of years and also on the Community Preservation Commission. So I have sat on your, some of your seats. I am not affiliated with the petition, but I want to speak in favor of it for two particular reasons. And I'll go into those. But the first is that there's no community-based need for, for the exceptionality of providing, of approving an additional car dealership. And secondly, it, the, having a new car dealer, having a deal, an additional car dealership in Northampton doesn't comport with the increased housing density that the city has made a commitment to, to provide fair housing for a greater number of, of people in the city. So back to the first point, there are currently nine dealerships in the city providing new cars and used cars to anyone who would like them. They are, in addition to that, there are 11, at least 11 businesses in the city that make all or part of their businesses from selling used cars. So that's 20 businesses. In addition to that, there are another 16 businesses that, that's a minimum, that provide vehicle-related services and that repair or, you know, of one sort or another. So that's 36. That's not counting gas stations or just plain parking lots or anything else vehicle-related, but just direct businesses. So there is certainly no need, no community-based need that would be fulfilled by the approval of yet another car dealership. Secondly, the, on the second point, the issue of of density, I think that we all understand that car dealerships, out of necessity, through no fault of their own, require the space to, to show cars. And these are not, I mean, these are places that need physical space. And we, we are in dire need of physical space in the city for housing. And I've worked on a number of, of equitable housing projects for the city, some of which are near to us and have been built, and very proud to have been associated with those. But we, we need to put our money into public transportation and into housing for, for, for all of our citizens, I think, rather than for the more expansive use of that would be required for cars. Okay, and that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Real quick, can I have a show of hands? Anybody, I just wanted to get an idea of how many are out who want to speak? Oh, my goodness. Okay. So I I'm going to hear from one more person online. I want to, and then I want to hear from Director Mish. And then I want to come back too, because I feel like she might, some of her remarks might address or answer some of the questions. I will, we will hear from everybody who wants to speak, but I, I think I want to, I want to hear, I have a couple of questions for Director Mish. So I'm going to hear from, sorry, Julia Reisman online, and then we're going to bounce to a couple of questions before coming back to the comments.
Thank you very much. My name is Julia Reisman. I live at 341 Prospect Street in Northampton. I'm speaking in favor of this zoning change and inspired by the capacity for this lot on King Street to to become housing and to become a destination that's walkable. As we continue to face a climate crisis, increasingly, our citizens are going to need walkable, non-car-related places to live and to, and to work and, 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 and to get around. So its location, so close to the rail trail, so close to downtown, and so close to so many vital businesses, means it would be, would be a lost opportunity to turn it over to a spot for cars to be sold. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I have a specific reason for, for jumping to Director Mish right now. So which is specifically, I really do want to speak to briefly and, and make sure that we're remaining focused on what this legislation is. And what, and, and, and I want to talk about whether or not it's going to have an impact on the, I know everybody's concerned about the development at King Street, but this is not a hearing on that site. And, and I think, I think we all need to hear from and, and get an understanding of how, whether and how this, this potential legislation might affect that. So and I think Director Mish can answer some of those questions. I'd also thought Attorney Seawall was going to be here. He'd asked me if I needed him, and I, I told him. Have you heard from Allen? Okay. I'll, I'll text him, but, but you might be, be able to answer some of these questions. So. So if you could just give a brief rundown of, you know, how our gateway, our gateway zoning works in this capacity, and, you know, what you know about how this could affect, affect that and how it would come into play.
Sure. So just as a little bit more of a context and background, the Central Business Gateway District is one of sort of three districts in the downtown area. So we have Gateway, Side Street, and Core. And there are new sort of hybrid kind of zoning that is heavily weighted on form and design. And when the City Council adopted the Form-Based Code that included the Gateway District, which is the section from North Street on King Street to the, where the rail trail shared-use path crosses right at Stop and Shop, essentially. That's the gateway on the north end. There's a gateway section on the south end on Pleasant Street from Hockenham Road down to the Dyke, where the 91 exit is. So in thinking about the gateway, as it differs from the Side Street and the Core districts and Central Business, there's still a heavy component related to form and design. So how much building along the frontage must, you know, must occupy the frontage? How tall the buildings must be? What the rhythm and, and design of the, the facades with windows and articulation of those materials along the street-facing building components? So the idea is that you're really focusing on the form and creating a building that surrounds the street and becomes, the, the buildings themselves create vibrancy or attempt to create more of a walkable and active and vibrant streetscape. And so the focus again is on building, not so much on uses. So, so long, and the zoning again sort of identifies a range of uses that are allowed. And people who are investing in private property look at the zoning ordinance and see the range of uses that are allowed. Some of them are allowed by right. Some of them are allowed if you go to the Planning Board for site plan approval. Some are allowed by special permit. So the special permit is the, is the hardest threshold to overcome. The Planning Board has a lot of discretion to ensure that that proposed use is appropriate in that location and that, that an applicant may have met those criteria. So all of these are listed as part of the zoning. And in the Gateway District, auto sales are one of the uses allowed, but they're allowed by special permit. So that means that there's a really high mark that needs to be met in order for the board to approve it. And that means it has to meet all of those form features, site layout, access, minimum curb openings and landscaping and all the factors that are part of the zoning. And again, it's, it's really focused on making sure that the way that buildings are oriented and frame the street are the are achieved in a way that help create opportunities for vibrancy in the city. So what is being discussed now is that special permit element for, you know, auto sales. And what you're talking about is looking at the whole, you know, both those segments of gateway, the north end and the south end, and whether or not that use is appropriate even through special permit. And like, there are ways, essentially this request really wouldn't affect the property that people are talking about so much because there are mechanisms and tools that are specifically written into the statutes that allow investors to be able to be assured that when they make an investment, they can avail themselves of the opportunities that are in the zoning at that moment. So I think the council should be aware that in evaluating this, you want to, you're looking at all the properties in Gateway, north and south sections of downtown. And I would also just say, so there's some questions about mixed use. And just to elaborate a little bit more detail, the. And just to elaborate a little bit more detail, the Gateway does allow residential, restaurant, retail, office, housing, mixed uses. And those are all part of the option, the choices that an investor can avail themselves of when they're looking at developing in the Gateway District.
Before I go back.
Wait, so you're saying that the purchase already, since this purchase already happened, this change would not affect this piece of land?
It's not the purchase, but there are mechanisms in the state statute that allow an applicant to file permits in order to preserve the existing zoning that's in place at the time that they file those applications.
Have they filed the applications?
No, not yet. But it's pretty typical if someone's, you know, wants to just make sure that they can continue down a path. It's not necessarily guaranteeing that, you know, the, any permits will be issued, but it's just allowing freeze so that they can pursue a path that they intended to pursue.
Does anybody from, from amongst us have any further questions? Chris?
I do. Director Mish. In our code, if, if, and I guess there must be a proposal for the site or something. Maybe I'm the only one in the room who doesn't know that there's a proposal on the site. So forgive me. I know what site we're talking about, that everyone seems to be talking about, even though that's not what the agenda is about. On that site, it's kind of like a long skinny site. I believe our zoning code requires the building to be right up against the road, that there can't be parking in front of the building. Can there be parking on the side of the building? Or does it have to be back past the face of?
The.
A percentage of parking that you're allowed on the side?
Yes. So there's, the code has a number of different details about how much of the front along the street a building has to occupy. And then how much can be parking, how much can be driveway, how much has to be landscaped. So all of those details are in the existing code that anyone proposing any use in the Gateway District has to comply with. So it's not just one use is held to one standard and another use is held to a different standard.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So I'm sorry. These other car dealerships were okay presumably under some sort of special permit.
So the, you're referring to the dealerships that are further up King Street? So that's in the Highway Business District, and it's a different zoning district. The Gateway District, a portion of it, not the entire thing, but a part of it had been part of Highway Business District previously. But the zoning changed, you know, more recently. And the, and auto dealerships are allowed by site plan approval in the Highway Business District, which is a lower threshold. It's not, it's not a discretionary permit. It's more of a ensuring that the, you know, technical standards of the site are addressed as opposed to the use. And special permit is about whether or not a use is appropriate in a, in a specific location.
I'm a visual person who's really bad with street names. But I'm pretty sure, I looked at my map when you said the streets. So we're talking about from where the bike path crosses King Street near Stop &amp; Shop?
Yep.
Towards the center of town up until?
Dunkin' Donuts.
Dunkin' Donuts. So that's the area we're talking about. So there's no current auto dealerships in this, in that area of that district.
Correct.
Very big auto-related retail shop, Northampton Tire. Right across the street from the lot in question.
Oh, okay. Yep. I forgot. I never go there. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna now bounce back to the public. And I think Dave Mintz was the next hand that I saw earlier. I promise I'll come back. We'll hear from everybody.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, the committee members and the planning board. I, I want to begin by saying that I think the Gazette did us all a disservice because they advertised this joint meeting a couple of days ago. And that's what I, that's what got my attention as a Northampton resident. And the focus of their advertisement was actually on the very lot we're kind of talking about that we're not supposed to be talking about, I guess. So I, I think that might be what got other people here. So my understanding is that that specific issue is not on any agenda tonight. Am I correct about that?
There is no specific
Okay.
Plan review of that project.
All right. Well, that being said. Oh, I'm sorry. David Mintz. I live on Florence Road in Florence.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, so anyway, you know, I, I, I think that that specific issue that we're not supposed to be talking about is actually very, very integral to what we are supposed to be talking about. And, and what I want to try to do is bring some equanimity to the conversation. I understand that in terms of these decisions about site plan approval and what to put where, there are a lot of different concerns that go into the basket. I think one important concern for Northampton is, is tax base and, and money coming into the city's coffers. I've lived in Northampton since 1986. I fell in love with Northampton when I moved to Springfield out of law school in 1982 and immediately knew I wanted to live here. And, and, and God bless me, I ended up here, and I love this city. I have a vehement affection for this city. And, and one thing about, about what's going on in Northampton right now is that we're, we're becoming the victims of our own success. Like many successful small cities that grow into best arts towns in America, prices go up, artists move out. And if you look around the downtown and I hear it all around me from people who live elsewhere, there are a lot of vacancies and Northampton, folks, is going through some changes. And so I think we have to take that into consideration when we look at this specific proposed ordinance. You know, Director Mish and, and Mr. Tate, very helpful for me to understand what specific area we're talking about here, about this ordinance. You know, the word opportunity has been used a lot tonight. The word need has been used a lot tonight. I think that Northampton is looking at opportunities to reinvent itself and to reclaim its, it's, 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 I don't want to say glory, but to reclaim its unique existence among all the other small cities, at least in Massachusetts. I thank the gentleman Nick who spoke before me. He did a lot more research than I did about all the auto dealerships we already have in this area. And I think that this ordinance, and I'm speaking in favor of it, I guess, and I didn't know until I got here that we'd be talking about this ordinance. But I do think it's important. I think we do have enough car dealerships. I think we should avail ourselves of the opportunity to make use of available land for things that are going to enhance the spirit and vigor of the city. And I'm talking about things like housing. I'm talking about things like open space. I'm talking about things like maybe other, 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 other retail that people might need. And, and I'll also say that I, I have a lot of respect for women entrepreneurs. And regarding the site-specific place we're not supposed to be talking about, I have a lot of respect for the person who owns that and everything they have accomplished. But I think that what we need to do is put this conversation in the context of where we want the city to go moving forward. We've got work to do, and we've got vacancies to fill. And we have a, the bones and structure and the populace of a wonderful, wonderful city. And it is a wonderful city even as I speak. But what I, what I don't want to see is another auto dealership corridor. I see those everywhere. They're nondescript, they're banal, and they have nothing to do, as far as I'm concerned, with the spirit of Northampton. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vehement affection. I love that. Online, Gwen Nabod.
Oh yes. Hello, thank you. My name is Gwen, and I live in Ward One, Northampton. And I'm here tonight because I am very concerned, as the previous speaker just said, about the changes that I've seen in Northampton even since I got here in 2019. And the place that I came from used to be more like Northampton is now. And there was a point where we began to grow. And what sent me out here was the gentrification. And I would like to see Northampton moving in a different direction than what happened in my hometown. And when I came out here, we don't realize the things that we lose ecologically when we start putting in these heat padding-type things that interfere with the ecology of the environment. Even if there's nothing there, there's, there's things that are, that might move through there. It might be a pathway to something that nobody, everybody will not even notice and they'll forget. And, and they won't remember until they can see it again or it comes back. So I just came tonight to always, always support the possibility of more affordable housing and accessibility for people to get around town and to revive the economy of Northampton post-COVID in a way that supports art and artists and musicians and the culture and the agricultural culture that is also here. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Gwen. In the, in the back, he's had his hand up for a bit. Don't forget to say your name and where you live.
Not sure I want to say where I live now. Mitch Palatin, Audubon Road. You got it. Does that door work? I can leave that door. So look, I've heard what everyone has had to say. I respect everyone's opinion about this. But I actually, yeah, I've lived in Northampton for 27 years. I've also been involved with commercial real estate in this marketplace for about 35 years. And so I have a little bit of a different perspective about the marketplace. And then speaking against the petition largely because, as Carolyn, you know, mentioned, they already have levers in place that someone has to go through and, you know, satisfy in order for the city to approve it. And candidly, working in the I-91 corridor in Greater Western Mass, I would tell you that this, you know, planning group is one of the best, and they are always very attentive and thoughtful. And nothing gets by them unless it meets all the criteria. And so to change that would have an impact on, it's a cause and effect. If you go ahead now and change that zoning, valuation of everyone's real estate in that marketplace that have already made commitments there will be impacted. It would actually create a hardship for the people that have invested already in that marketplace and made plans based around what the zoning currently allows. You'd be upsetting that equilibrium that's associated with that. And, and we're not supposed to be talking about the site that, you know, the invisible girl are in the room, and I'm not going to. I would just say to you, there have been sites in this corridor that have been available for sale for a really long time, going on 15-plus years. And they have not been developed. They were available to the market. There was ample opportunity for a developer to come along and say, I want to do housing there. Or I want to do, you know, shops there. And, you know, it hasn't happened. And one of the reasons it hasn't happened is because the person who owned the land wanted a lot of money for it. And so that really, your use dictates value. And so if you change the uses allowed, it would drive down the value potentially of those sites and impact what you can do there and impact the people who own real estate in that corridor currently. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I heard Audubon and probably it was a, the, the bird version of it, but I heard the car version of it. The, the German superhighway version of it. That's why I laughed, so apologies. Anyway, I'm a nerd. Online, Brett Constantine.
Good evening. Thank you all. I will try to be brief. I am speaking tonight, Brett Constantine, Willow Street, Florence. Speaking tonight in favor of the proposed amendment to the zoning and also against the request to waive the lighting requirement at the YMCA. Reasonings for each, the lighting.
I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to interrupt. If you could limit your remarks right now to just the ordinance in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you. I missed the beginning, sorry. For the zoning change, I think that people have already, Ms. Mish and others have already covered that it, in some ways, it changes very little. And so for that reason, I think it's okay to make the change. If we, I've heard a lot of support for not car dealerships in that area. And if that's the only change, then I think it's okay to make that. Thank you.
Thank you. Who, front row, I've seen your hand a couple of times. Yes.
Hello, everybody. My name is Taylor Guss. I live at 7 Rust Avenue.
Speak up, please.
Yep, sure. I'm at 7 Rust Avenue in Northampton. I have been a Northampton fan for many years, but only had the privilege to move here about a year and a half ago in 2022. Part of the reason why I chose to move here is because the city has everything that one would find in a city much larger. And part of that has to do with the way that the city is laid out and zoned. King Street is one of the main thoroughfares into the city. And the Gateway District zoning for its southern section clearly aims to reflect a transition from less dense, driving-focused zoning into more dense, mixed zoning. There are bike lanes on that section of King Street up to where the rail trail crosses the road. Lanes get reduced to one-way in both directions, and the street becomes narrower. In its current form, the lot in question, though not supposed to speak about it, but I, I feel like it still applies to the district at large. In its current form, the lot really doesn't serve us well with mitigating the impacts of climate change. As others before me have mentioned, large swaths of asphalt exacerbate floodwater during storms and also contribute to what are called urban heat islands, which raise the temperature in those sections of the city during hot sunny days. The new development proposed for this lot would not do much to change those effects. So I'm obviously in favor of the amendment. I don't think I need to remind everyone of the flooding and wildfire smoke effects we all experienced last summer, nor that we exceeded 1.3 degrees Celsius of warming in 2023, or that the last 12 months have been the hottest ever recorded in human history. I would like to see this section of King Street in the Central Business Gateway District developed in tandem with what has already been achieved in the street design. So I envision, you know, a mix of housing, retail, open park space. I believe this could drive more tax revenue, alleviate housing shortages and costs of others, as others have spoken to, and also spur more development around alternative forms of transit. And I, lastly, I just believe this type of development would align better with the Gateways District, Gateway District zoning goals and help the city come closer to achieving its climate ambitions. Thank you.
Thank you. Online, Owen Mitz.
Hi, my name is Owen Mitz. I live on Crescent Street in Northampton. And I am very much against the proposed change. I believe there is plenty in the current system that would, that would give us what we need to have, and I would like to read you three short paragraphs, which will sound much better than what I can do extemporaneously. This is discussing the lot that we can't discuss. I have a hybrid suggestion. The city of Northampton has a plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. This plan includes the reducing the number of fossil fuel-powered vehicles in the city. Unfortunately, for all the good intentions, the city is an EV-charging desert, which has not helped move this greenhouse gas reduction effort forward. Just suppose that this plot of land in question was turned into a place where you could purchase a non-fossil fuel-powered vehicle and charge it. I think that most people have a stereotype in mind when somebody mentions automobile dealership. They quickly conjure up acres of beat up cars, oil spills, smoke and loud sounds that come from the repair shop facility. Guess what? EVs hardly require any maintenance. They need new tires, windshield wiper blades and occasionally a bath, and that's it. In cooperation with the city and a private business, you can build an attractive, modern showroom surrounded by EV chargers mainly powered by the solar panels on the building. The structure can be offset from the street by greenery such as shrubs or trees. And you have something that not only reflects the values of North Hampton, but also the environment goals and nature. So as I said before, I think that not having the possibility of a newer type of, more modern type of automobile place restricts and, and the fact that it is and could be an on-mo dealership does not end conflict with what the, the goals and values of North Hampton is. Thank you. All right.
Right, thank you. Yep. Carolyn, can you turn the, the little box off and the?
My name is Alex Pettis. I am a resident in North Hampton on Colesman Road. I am against this petition. I think, I think everyone's hung up on this additional dealership and everyone keeps saying that it's not an additional dealership. They're simply moving a dealership. I also don't think there's anything wrong with the zoning that's, that's there. There shouldn't be any changes to it. If there hasn't been any changes to it now, why are we trying to make a change to it? It just doesn't make any sense. The planning board does a fantastic job with their design. And they should, there shouldn't be anything that needs to be changed. On top of that, everyone talks about housing. Like the gentleman before me that spoke, there's been ample time to buy this property and have a development put there and nothing has happened. So why does anybody have the right to say anything against that if they didn't pay for it? It just does, it's not okay. I think another dealership, not an additional one, going there is going to do nothing but create more jobs in North Hampton. It's going to support the economy more like we are looking for. And everyone keeps looking past that. And I just, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I believe that's Jackie McCreener online.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to comment and Jacqueline McCreener, North Street, Ward 3, North Hampton. I've enjoyed listening to both sides of the argument. And I would just like to ask, when it comes time for the planning board members and the, and the city councillors to talk about this, if the planning board members especially could make sure that your mics are on and that you are speaking clearly into the microphones so that we can all hear the chat, the meeting group chat is turned off. Otherwise, I would have asked that through that process. But if you could just speak up, that I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. In the back.
Hi, um, can you hear me? Or doing, okay. I, my name's Thistle and I live at 30 Pleasant Street. I am a professional musician and a real estate investor. I just want to comment. I'm looking for real estate in the town. Like to me, I want to invest directly within walking distance. I want to walk everywhere. I really think that real estate in the town itself is incredibly valuable. And I just, I walked to my dentist today. I walked to my orthologist. I walked to, I walk everywhere and I spend all my money in town and I just think it's magical. And I think the more people who can do that, the more money you'll have in the town. And I wanted to buy that lot, you know, but, you know, there is a thing of where, you know, people can unfortunately hold real estate hostage, which is unfortunate and should be addressed probably in another meeting, but, you know, I think those people should be taxed for leaving things vacant and, you know, it's unfortunately, when these people want more money than something's worth, that's what makes it sit there. And so they should be taxed. But yeah, I just, I'm in favor of changing the zoning. I live very close. I live on Pleasant and Main and I don't want a car dealership near me. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands online. I see a pink arm in the back.
Hi, my name's Lauren Norman. I've been living in North Hampton for eight years now. And I fell in love with North Hampton, everything that was about. And I've just seen over the past few years, it kind of like really changed and it kind of, you know, makes me sad when I drive downtown and I see like homeless people sleep on the steps out here and like homeless people all over the rail trail and stuff like that. So then that just makes me think about like some stuff that other people said, like seeing the back of this building on the rail trail. I think that, you know, there's other like homeless people sleeping in tents on the rail trail and like stuff. And I'm not making sense. I'm just really nervous. I think that, like, they already paid for this lot and the current zoning, I don't see a change for it. I think that the planning board that they have is meticulous and aligns with what is expected the place to look like there. I think that, like, it was said that they're not adding another dealership. They're just simply moving one dealership to this new space that's going to create more jobs for people. I know like the Coca-Cola factory is supposed to be closing, so we're going to be losing a lot of like tax and whatever from that facility. So we're going to have this, I just think it's a lot of opportunity and stuff. I think that there's a lot of like riffraff type, like already like stuff going on in the city. And I think that this is just a great opportunity to promote more income, revenue and jobs for people. So that's all I have to say.
Great, thank you. But way in the back, I think that's Josh.
Hi, I'm Josh Singer. I live on Grant Ave, North Hampton. Just one sec. I've come here in support of the zoning change for the Central Business Gateway District as part of the signers of the petition. I believe that this change is in line with the city has already planned to do in the Sustainable North Hampton Comprehensive Plan, which I've read relatively in depth. Adding additional car centered infrastructure such as auto sales establishments only serves to further lock us into this usage for this district. Opening a new dealership is going to put us in that usage for the next 20 some odd years if any district was to be built. Again, not talking about any specific things, but just car centralized, centered infrastructure in general. I believe this district as laid out in the zoning plan and in the comprehensive plan for North Hampton was made to show that when you're coming into North Hampton, you're coming into a city and that city is walkable. That city is centered around things that you can get to and things that you can do as a community. I don't believe that auto sales is one of those things. I believe that if you want to go and buy a car, you usually are driving there or you can take transit there. And we already have, as which was said, many car centered things in North Hampton that are already zoned and built there and districts that are still allowed to have that exact zoning. I believe that the Sustainable North Hampton Plan has committed the city to sustainable policies and practices. I agree with the previous comments, which also state that we should follow this plan, which was heavily researched and supported by the city. And what is the point of a plan such as this if we don't follow it? Inclusion, this zoning change is a great step in that direction. Even if it doesn't pass, I believe that with the specifications listed in the current zoning, auto sales doesn't really fit, especially in this location. So I end my time. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Very back row.
Hi, my name is Joseph. I live in Ward 3 on Orchard Street. This is near the, the King Street section of the Gateway District. And I was going to start with, I would love to see more, more small businesses, more housing near my neighborhood, near the bike path. In light of recent things people have recently been talking about, I also wanted to point out that that there are other lots in the Gateway District and I'd rather not see car dealerships in them either. I'd rather kind of establish a rule and discourage car dealerships from applying for those. Because among other things, a car dealership kind of sprawls. This was brought up before. And in terms of jobs, you could fit more businesses and more jobs into that area if you use them in other ways. And, and housing is, is important too, that, that would help. I don't know, I'm excited for the stated plan of the Gateway District and I'm not really excited to see more, more car dealerships. Thanks.
Thank you. Yep.
Good evening. My name is Martha Ebner and I live on Rust Ave in North Hampton. And I'm here tonight to express my support of the proposed zoning amendment to prohibit auto sales in the Central Business Gateway District. I ask that you support the goals and the values of the Sustainable North Hampton Plan for the future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I see a hand in the back. That's our Smith Vog trusty, Michael Kaylin.
Good evening. My name is Michael Kaylin. I've lived in the city of North Hampton all my life. A lot of people moved here. A lot of people are looking at situations in regards to change. Change is always tough. But the thing is, there has to be a balance. And the thing that I'm looking at from my perspective is this is an emotional issue. A lot of people have become emotionally attached to open land, to bike paths, to changes that have occurred. There's been a lot of changes in the automobile industry as well. My dad came from Ireland. He was an immigrant. He came here and he started an automobile business. Little gas station, wait for it, on King Street. And he was able to provide for our family to be able to start with that little business and grow it to become a car dealer. A Hudson dealer. That's a naming you don't hear about. But, so we grew a business and as our family, I had five boys and one girl. Four of us went in for a car business. I got WD-40 in my blood. I'm still working at a car dealership part-time. But it provided monies for my brothers to raise families, to buy more property in North Hampton, to do more business in North Hampton. And I really believe in North Hampton for living here my whole life. I know that as I talked about change, the changes that are occurring as far as the other dealerships, they're family dealerships, just like we were. Every dealership here, even though there may be numbers of franchises, there's brothers, the Leah family came from New York, but they're all brothers that run that operation. It's a family dealership. Jim Burke and his son Brian. It's a family dealership. And the thing is that I'm seeing with the Leas and the other operations that are on King Street already, they all have employees. The employees are earning money. They're taxpayers. The other thing about dealerships is for every car that's sold, the excise tax that gets paid on that car goes directly to the city of North Hampton. For the, all the dealerships that are here, all the property taxes goes directly to the city of North Hampton. There's a shortfall in our budget in the city of North Hampton. And the thing is, we have to have a balance in regards to income for business and commerce to be able to afford for people to do things and change the city of North Hampton. Having lived here my whole life, I have to say that I have to believe in business commerce as a balance to watching how my children are growing up and my grandchildren are now growing up. And Carla has a family. It's a family dealership. And she needs to bring her children along. Not necessarily to come in the car business, but to be able to provide a good education and a living. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, you, yeah. Who I know, but whose name has left me.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name's Kit Sang Booth and okay, my name's Kit Sang Booth and I live on Elm Street in North Hampton. And I think, yes, change is hard and climate change is really hard. And I think that our relationship to the automobile has to change. And I think part of our sustainability plan is to cut down on our use of the automobile. And, you know, I'm not talking that specific site that we're not supposed to talk about, but it's next to a rail trail and is near public transportation. And I agree with how, what a wonderful walking city this is. I moved here from the DC suburbs about 15 years ago. And when I arrived, I just was amazed at how walkable this town was. And I lost 10 pounds just walking around. And now I've gotten used to walking everywhere. And I, you know, that place, to have a place to be affordable places to live near downtown where people could walk to do their shopping would be amazing. And I, so I fully support the amendment and I'll keep it brief and that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. All the way in the back. Yeah.
Thank you very much. For the record, Tom Reedy, I'm an attorney with Bacon Wilson. I'm out of the Amherst office. And I'm here on behalf of Tommy and Carla Cosenzi of that lot that we're not going to talk about, but this has become a referendum on it, obviously. So I'm a permitting attorney. I do this in the valley. I do this across the Commonwealth. I'm going to echo what Mitch Palatin had said. Kudos to your planning department and your director. You have a fantastic planner. And I think what you've got here and listening to what she had to say, you've got a great bylaw and you've got the safeguards in place. You've got a special permit. And so a lot of the comments that we're hearing tonight are from folks, which I would expect to hear if there is an application on this lot for an automobile dealership. They hear those same comments, right? I think that's the, that's the appropriate place for a lot of these comments. And not necessarily to say, well, let's holistically prohibit automobile dealerships in the CBG zoning district because of potentially one parcel. When you look at the other uses, they're broad, they're varied. And as Carolyn mentioned, it's a form based, character based zoning district where you're not going to find this in Massachusetts many places because you're ahead of the curve. You've got those safeguards in place to make sure that if there is an automobile dealership, it's keeping with the intent and purpose of the zoning district. There's a presumption by a lot of the folks here that automobile, automobile dealership could never fit into that. Why not let us try? Right? We're talking about opportunity. Why not give the opportunity to see if it can? And by foreclosing that opportunity, we'll never be able to know. There, as Carolyn mentioned, there are mechanisms that we can use so that any change you make is essentially moot when it applies to the, the land. We don't want to have to go through that route. We would prefer that you deny this petition, allow your planning department to work the way that they have and not to piecemeal change this. And given those safeguards, if an automobile project could meet that character based design criteria and the district intent, especially to redevelop an underdeveloped, underutilized lot to enliven the area and to increase the tax base, why wouldn't you give them that opportunity? And that, that's all really about the lot we're asking for. But I think generally in that zoning district, because you have those other procedures. because you have those other procedures and safeguards in place. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, hi Danny.
Hi. My name is Danny McCon. I live at 32 Perkins Avenue. Um, my background is in urban planning and economic development and more recently I'm a small real estate developer. And I am in favor of the zoning change. Um, so I just want to talk about the general reasons that I'm in favor of the zoning change. It is the gateway district to the downtown and I don't think that good zoning in this district would allow for auto sales. And you know, the lot that we're not supposed to be talking about aside, there are in fact, as somebody else mentioned, other opportunities on this, in this district in, on King Street going toward downtown and on Pleasant Street where auto sales could happen. Maybe they wouldn't be, uh, you know, a larger brand name new dealership. They could be used dealerships, but there definitely are other opportunities for auto sales in a district that we're trying to transition to an extension of downtown and to a gateway into downtown. So I, I think that there's some pretty good long-term reasons to, uh, change the zoning in the entire district, however it applies to this proposal on this one site. Uh, I think it would be much more appropriate to not allow auto sales at all. And I don't think really they can be designed in a way that would be, you know, conformed to the district and what the intent is. Um, and, and I just do want to speak very briefly about this idea of somehow affecting the value of these properties or being worse for the city financially. Removing auto sales is not going to affect the value of the vast majority of these parcels because they're increasingly having development potential for higher density uses. Their values are going up. And the, the value of the city, to the city of these parcels developed more completely in mixed-use ways is going to be much, much higher from a revenue, uh, a revenue potential standing for the city. And that's been like proven and shown over and over again. There's no way that auto sales or any other big box type thing is ever going to match the revenue potential of a mixed, uh, mixed-use development that is an intense development of a site anywhere in the city. So I would say, you know, for many reasons, you know, we should kind of discount those economic arguments. Everyone's going to be fine. Everyone's going to make their money. And we should, uh, in fact, just allow, only allow the kinds of development that we actually really want to see in the Gateway District to the downtown of our pretty awesome city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else out there? All right. Um, I'm not gonna, what time is it? Eight fifteen. Okay. Um, I'm just thinking, they should close the public hearing and have us discuss at this point. Um, actually, before I do that, before I ask for a motion to close the pub, uh, the public portion of the hearing, um, does any, uh, anybody here on planning board or the, uh, from council have any questions for, uh, for Director Mish?
I just want to clarify, you can still close the hearing and ask questions.
And ask questions, okay. Um,
Can we close public comment?
Well, the hearing.
Where the hearing?
I'm a little nervous about closing the public hearing already for the, even the comment period until we have some more time to discuss it. Uh, you know, it's a pretty big topic. Um, I think we can move to our internal discussion now.
Well, I don't, I'm not hearing a second as of right now. So, um, why do we hold off on that for just a minute? Uh, but I, right now I'd like to open up to, to folks here and to, uh, uh, Director Mish. Folks have questions here? Sorry, who's the hand?
No.
Oh, no. Uh, we're going to hold off and just, we're going to talk amongst ourselves for a few minutes. Okay?
Carolyn, just, and I'm sorry, my microphone is dead. Part of the technology problem.
Just remind me when the city council passed this, um, the gateway things. I know we had a lot of discussions in the planning board. How long has it been now since it's been on the books?
Um, let me just look quickly. I think it's been about four years, but I'll, um, maybe it's less, two or three years. I, COVID kind of made it difficult for me to remember, but hang on, I can find out.
I think we passed it right after I, I started as counselor, right? So I think it's just a little over, around two years.
Oh, two, really? Okay.
So we worked on it when we were on planning board, when I was on planning board, and then I think we passed it in the council after I was sworn in.
Okay. I'll look it up if you have other questions. I'll just keep going.
No, I just remembered that we did, thank you, Marissa, have some really big discussions about the gateway districts, especially down towards the roundabout by the bowling alley. Um, but I can't recollect kind of the nature of this piece around car dealerships. Um, which is unfortunate.
Yeah. I mean, I think during the conversation there was, um, you know, this came out of, uh, was, there were parts of it that were in the, that we had an entrance business district before Gateway. So that was sort of the intermediate zoning district. So, um, at the time, I believe entrance, um, business allowed also by special permit, um, car dealership. So I think the idea was that, you know, if, there could be a potential, um, maybe it wasn't, maybe it's not common, but it could be if, if someone came forward, um, with a proposed use for auto sales that if, that were, you know, one and a half stories, two stories, if it met the frontage requirements, if it did, um, um, uh, meet all the other character, um, requirements, would the, could it be conceivable that the, um, it would be appropriate to have that use in that location, either on King Street or on Pleasant Street, lower Pleasant Street? So, um, I believe that was sort of the nature of the conversation. And so to leave it a special permit because it gave, um, a much more, um, discretion to the planning board to make that decision about whether it was appropriate in that location and given the proposed use, but not necessarily close the door entirely.
And Carolyn, I'll ask my annoying question again on the, the other side of downtown. So the, this district is from the Rotary by the bowling alley?
Um, so yes, the diet, basically just on the other side of the bowling alley.
Where does it end?
Hockenham Road.
Which is, can you give me a landmark?
Um, so, um, yeah, I'll, almost about where the, you know, where the UPS store is.
Yeah.
Okay, that road goes, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so that-
Along Pleasant Street there? It's not Conn's Ave or anything like that?
Um, no, Conn's, um, yes, it goes over to Conn's and then it turns into Side. So it is part of that, um, V coming out of the roundabout.
Yep.
Going up Pleasant and also up Con Street. Um, before it becomes Side Street District about where the Housing Authority property is on Con Street. Or, um,
Okay.
McDonald House.
Boy, a picture would be so much easier. All right.
I could do a screen share if you want, but it's not going to have a picture on this street. Well, yes, I, I could do, I could do Google Earth if you need.
Oh, I see Hockenham.
Yeah.
That's the one that goes to like the wastewater treatment plant.
Mm-hmm. Is that the one that has a little parklet on the corner? The, well, yeah.
Yeah, where they move the sculpture.
Little sign, sculpture, yeah. Um, Carolyn, in, in your opinion, um, I, I mean, because I, I know we all, we all have a idea of what a, a, a a car dealership looks like. In your, my understanding or my recollection of the form-based code that is in place, it's, could, could a car dealership as, in the sort of the big expansive front parking lot and, you know, and the, and the building set far back, ju, you know, just to be clear, if a car dealership were in there, it couldn't look like that. Is that fair to say? Like, there's no way that it would look like that.
No, it wouldn't. That would not meet the criteria. So the existing, um, auto dealerships on the upper end of King Street, um, you know, from Stop and Shop to Damon Road where, um, um, you know, you've got your Volkswagen and Hyundai and Honda and Toyota. Those do not meet the character-based district requirements at all.
And even in that next district, um, the car dealerships that are there now, um, another car dealership like those though could still be built. You know, where, where there already are the, the newer car dealerships on King Street.
Yes.
There's no, no change in the zoning since those have been built that would preclude that kind of car dealership.
Correct.
That's like on the other side of the-
Right.
Okay.
A car dealership could also have mixed retail um, or housing on the second floor theoretically.
Yes.
Thinking outside of the box.
Right.
They could, yep, right, have retail alongside them and the car dealership. Um, probably the inventory, the amount of inventory that a car dealership could keep is a, a big factor for sure on a lot of land, but-
Right. Yeah, I mean, you, it's not something that you commonly see. Um, so it may not work, but if, if, if someone were to propose something that meets the character district requirements, then the idea is, is that use appropriate, given that they've addressed all the form and character components of the zoning?
In the, Carolyn, in the special permit process, which is like you said, the highest kind of threshold of, of, of planning board review, is there kind of like a critical mass of variations before the planning board runs out of discretion to, to, um, uh, allow, uh, to approve a, a special permit? Does that make any sense? Like sort of deviations from the, the zoning or the, or?
Well, no, there's not a point that you can say, okay, you've crossed the line. I mean, at that point, it's really, it becomes, you know, so the board has to make the evaluation about all the components that are being proposed. And ultimately it is a very, um, you know, the board can say no if it doesn't fit and it doesn't meet the, um, the, um, components of the district, the use isn't appropriate. It's really about, is this use appropriate, given the way it's um, designed and laid out? Is that use and it, is that appropriate in that location? And the, and that sort of standard is applicable to any use that's, um, only allowed by special permit. So, um, that's the, that's the difference between the site plan review and special permit. It's the board has to make that determination that it may not be appropriate in a given location and that's okay, because that's what the code is set up to do. And within that, if, if somebody's coming forward with a special permit and they in every single way meet the form-based code, but it's the use that the planning board has a potentially an issue with, or the public comes forward and says, we don't like this use, is there the discretion felt by the planning board for that reason, the use alone? If it otherwise completely conforms with, with the form-based code? Um, ultimately, yes, it would be prudent and appropriate for the board to be able to identify why it's not appropriate. Even given that, because then you fall back to the code, to the, um, the plan, the goals and objectives that are identified in the plan. Um, maybe there's something about the use that is in conflict with other parts of the plan. So the, the um, Sustainable Northampton Plan, the Climate, um, Resilience and Regeneration Plan is sort of the foundation, um, for an, um, that special permit review and that lens for the special permit review. And it was adopted only two years ago.
Two, wow.
Any more questions from the?
So what, what is our purpose here tonight? We would make a recommendation to the city council and the city council would take our joint session recommendation and vote on it?
Yeah, the session is joint, but we will, each, each body will make its own recommendation. So you guys could hate it and we could love it. Vice versa, we could all be neutral.
Right, but either way.
It's two, we each make our own recommendation.
And either way, nothing we say tonight is going to decide anything. This will all be decided at a city council meeting in the future.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And there'll be another public hearing, I, I would assume, with the city council, the full city council.
This is the official public hearing.
There won't be another chance for the comment.
There's, well, council holds public comment, but it's not a public hearing in the sense that it's on this topic. So it would be the council rules about the beginning of the meeting. Anybody can make any comment about anything.
But further deliberation and discussion and input from the, the community and all that, uh, would continue to happen.
You know, can you explain in the, uh, I guess, uh, when this first meeting happened, you, um, this process of the town, uh, residents changing of the zoning rules happened once before. You were-
In this, um, for this geographic section of King Street or just?
Uh, you, something happened where the, where they, someone wanted some zoning changes and they, they went through the process.
Um, oh, so a citizen petition for a zoning amendment?
The same thing that's happening.
Okay.
What, what was it for and what was the impact of it?
Um, so the one I think I recall, I mean, I have to go and look it up, um, was related to the landfill and whether or not landfill use was allowed in this, I believe is in the water supply protection district at the time. Um, and I think ultimately it then was, if I remember correctly, it, then there was a city council sponsor ultimately for different ordinance, but I may have the details um, not quite accurate because it was a while ago. Ultimately, typically, I mean, it doesn't happen because, you know, you want, zoning is a regulatory tool to help implement your policy objectives. And so you want to make sure that the regulations um, are consistent with the plan. And so, um, it's, um, makes, is typical and makes the most sense to have the board or the council or, um, the administrative staff submit zoning amendments to make sure that they are consistent with the, um, policy objectives of the, um, Sustainable Northampton Plan.
The, the language.
Yeah, Wes. Um, in terms of the special permit process, that is as you've described discretionary, um, and the form-based code in this district that speaks about the streetscape specifically. Um, and so the feel as you're either walking or driving or taking transit into town. I am aware that many, uh, sites in this district do back onto the existing rail trail. And so there's another form of frontage that isn't, to my knowledge, addressed in the code. Um, would we as the planning board through the special permit process have the discretion to think about that and think about the site layout and landscaping and so forth? Not just the frontage onto the street, but also effectively the frontage onto the bike path that is also in its own way a gateway into town?
Um, the, there are other components in the zoning that do require, um, that sort of evaluation and orientation. So, um, yes.
George, did you have a comment?
I, I just want to look at the language again. Um, there's more language besides this car dealerships, retail sales. There's other things that we would also be eliminating if we were to approve this exemption, right? This, uh, this, this, um, change. What?
I'm just going to pull it up.
Yep. It's in that table.
It's all related to sales of automobile. Um, so automobiles, establishments, selling, leasing, renting automobiles, use automobiles, trucks, new automobile tires, other accessories, boat, motorcycles, household and camping trailers.
Auto repairs would still be- Auto repairs would still be a.
That's separate.
A site, uh huh. I'm thinking currently of the, the establishments that are within these gateway districts now that have been allowed in the past. Like many of us familiar with Pleasant, Pleasant Street Car down by the bowling alley, it's just recently gone out of business, the North Hampton Tire Store, those, that use would still be allowed, the Pleasant Journey Auto would not be allowed at this point, selling used cars, even though it's a much smaller footprint. Something like that wouldn't be allowed.
Right.
Again, I'm thinking of these walkable areas. I, and I guess we don't always made earlier the point that we don't walk to buy a new car normally. I walked to North Hampton Tire, I walked to Ernie's Texaco, but right, I don't walk to buy a new car. I'm just trying to understand the differences there, that the uses that would still be allowed if in fact we went forward with this amendment.
So right in this district, the auto, auto repair is a special permit, so sort of treated similarly to auto sales.
So then we would be eliminating auto repair.
No, no, I'm just saying those uses are not allowed by right, they're allowed by special permit as well. So the repairs, repair and service are also special permit, but they're not being proposed to be changed in this.
Any other questions from the planning board or legislative matters? Okay, I think I'd like to just do, you know, check in for one last round of brief comments, and I see a couple of hands online, so, so yes.
I feel doubly blessed, thank you for letting me speak twice tonight.
Can you, you need to come to the podium, though.
Rick Olson from Laurel Street again. One, one could be forgiven for thinking, listening to the positive comments that have been made tonight about automotive dealerships that we were proposing to ban automobile dealerships, period, anywhere in North Hampton. And the fact is, this applies to a very specific zone within the town. Nobody is trying to eliminate automobile dealerships. Nobody is trying to prevent automobile dealerships from expanding in the town. That argument is simply spurious. There, there, there is the opportunity to develop automotive businesses if people want to do that within the bounds of North Hampton. Just not in this district. So let's, let's keep that very clear. No one is trying to prevent anyone from starting a car business. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yes, in the back.
Hi, how are you? Sorry, I'm nervous. My name is Carla Kuzenzi, I am a resident of Leeds, I'm also the owner of this property. You might recognize me from dropping off lunch at the police station or the fire department, from handing out scholarships at the local high schools. Or maybe you've seen me riding my bike on the bike path with my children, because that's where we often frequent from our home. I love this city, I'm raising my family here, I live here, I work here, I'm very, very invested in this city. And this piece of property is important to me as it is to everybody else. But in fairness, this piece of property, this vacant piece of property is our gateway to our city right now. And it's been sitting vacant for a very long time and everybody's had an opportunity to invest in it. And no one did, and I did. I invested actually over $5 million in this piece of property after it sat vacant for over 10 years. The people who work for me, we eat locally, every single day we buy lunch from a local restaurant. Wild Roots, Nourish, the Thai place, which we actually eat at today. Every day we go out and support a local business. I shop local, I don't go on Amazon to buy a baby gift for somebody. I go to the little boutique inside Thorntons Market. When I take my daughter out, I shop local, so do my employees. I employ over 170 people in this community. I bring people in, when they buy a car, they go out to dinner in North Hampton. When they're waiting for their car to be serviced, we're the ones who shuttle them to downtown North Hampton, our dealerships. I think that at this point, it's very imperative as a community that we place confidence in the planning board. By doing so, we uphold the integrity of the planning board process and respect the expertise of these board members who dedicate their time to making informed decisions. If we were to second guess and change these, these decisions every single time there was a disagreement, we would set a really dangerous precedent. It would undermine the authority of the planning board and erode the trust in the planning board process, ultimately leading to an inconsistency and uncertainty in our city's development. The planning board has established a meticulous design criteria, which I know very well, because I've been working with Carolyn on a design for, and let's just, everybody's curious about what it is, for a Volvo dealership, which by the way, is going 100% electric. And we, in that design, I love the bike path, we designed to the bike path, so it's welcoming for people to be able to use it. Providing water, providing air, providing picnic tables off the bike path, solar panels, charging stations. And I promise you, it does not look like a Volvo dealership. It doesn't look like a dealership at all, it actually looks like a storefront. And it doesn't take up the whole lot, it's very small compared to the size of the lot. So what I'm asking is for you to uphold the zoning that you already have in place and give us an opportunity to present to you what a dealership could look like in this zoning. Just give us a chance, we just want to show it to you. And if it doesn't work, we're happy to look at other options. And we've also told Carolyn, we're also happy to partner on other options. We've talked to plenty of people that have had other interests in it. But it's a very expensive piece of property that we paid for and it's not affordable to a lot of people. So if I can't build what I need to build on it, how long is it going to sit vacant in the gateway? I really appreciate your time, I was nervous about getting up and speaking and hesitant about coming to do so, but I thought it was really important that the people here understand that it's not just a car dealership, it's a person, it's a family, it's 170 people who depend on me to be able to feed their families. So thank you very much, I appreciate your time and letting me speak tonight.
Great, thank you. I see, so. Gwen, if you, if you can be brief, since you've already spoken.
I'm glad that the owner just spoke, because it does seem that low income people are always in, in the line of fire when it comes to these sorts of arrangements. And, you know, this, this, I wouldn't want it to be like a division between the housing authority and the rest of the city. And so if it sounds more like what the owner has just described, I would welcome that. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Gwen. All right. Again, you, you've already spoken once, so if you could please keep it very brief.
Thank you, Brett Constantine, Willow Street, Florence. Cars, and I, I really appreciate that, that Carla was able to speak, that's brave of her. It's not anything personal. Cars are still cars, whether they're electric or not. And I think that sustainability of the city is so important right now that we should be thinking about our deeper values that may not include prioritizing cars. And it should always be okay for citizens to take initiative and make changes, propose changes to the legislative bodies. I don't want that to be vilified, it's not just a, 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 a single fight. This is, this is, just came to our attention and is a bigger matter, is not a fight over one piece of property. It is actually about the character of the zoning district, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to move to close, whatever you want to call it.
The hearing, I have a second. Second. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? All right, there's nobody online, so I think we can do a voice vote. So for the legislative matters, all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, hearing none?
For the planning board?
Turn your mic on.
For the planning board, all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all right, and non-opposed, thank you.
All right, so with the public hearing closed, do I have, is there any motions from either, from either body or any particular recommendation?
I, I would say I'm against the idea of changing, changing policy in the middle. It just never seems like a good idea to me. Now, I think as a planning board member, I'd love to believe my, I have all this power and, you know, expertise. That probably is not necessarily true, but I think that it just doesn't. I mean, I don't want to see necessarily another similar car, car dealership there, but that's, I think changing those rules right now does not, is not a fair way to do it. Though, I guess, that being said, I would move to reject the zoning for actually, usually that's not how we do it, but with the, you know, these new fangled words, I would move to reject those, the, the changes.
Or.
A negative recommendation?
Right, not endorse and not recommend it, yeah.
Before we take a second on, on that, I, I would also like to say that I appreciate every single word that was spoken here. I appreciate every, how everybody got here in this process. As member of the planning board, I would prefer to leave it the way it is. Personally, I'd rather see ideas come to us within the context of our form based code that we spent a lot of time working on. And we don't know what we don't know. I'd like to see people bring ideas to us and let us weigh them in the context of the zoning that we currently have. And let us give people the opportunity, we may be very surprised by something that somebody brings to us that we wouldn't have seen if we'd banned it. I'm just not in favor in this situation of excluding or banning a particular business type. Personally, thank you.
I guess I'll, I'll speak as well, and I, I want to echo your same sentiments is that I'm so thankful that everyone came and spoke. We have a lovely city here. And for me, it comes down to trust. And I'm looking right now at the conditions for special permits and there seems to be a lot of language that I kind of think will assuage people's fears. Things that stood out to me is in the special permits request, the part three, the request to use will promote a harmonious relationship of structures and open spaces to the natural landscape, existing buildings and other community assets. There's also a part about, at number six, the request to use bears a positive relationship to public convenience or welfare, will not unduly impair the integrity or character of the district, nor be detrimental to the health, morals or general welfare. I think a lot of people are stating that, those are things that we are concerned about in our vision. And I, I too think that we are a city of ideas and I am curious to see what people could reimagine a car dealership to look like. I also stand with folks that I love downtown, I spent most of my adult life working in downtown. I've been in the service entertainment industries and I love walking our city. And I too would not like to see just a traditional car dealership there. But for me, again, it comes down to, it seems that there are guardrails built in and to take away the, the right or the ability of this planning board who works meticulously to, to consider these things, it's kind of off putting for me, so that's where I'm standing.
I, I do want to say one thing, we, I'm a planning board, we do okay things that we don't like how they look. So, I mean, again, I, I'm against this thing, but I just want in full disclosure, like this notion that we somehow have this power to just reject, we don't reject things. We, in fact, we, I've like said yes to some things that I thought were some fairly unattractive in, you know, next to neighbors who were very unhappy the things were being built. And, you know, so I think that I, I just, when, when we, when we vote on this, I, I do want people to not overstate the power that we have. I'm, you know, like we are saying, I, I think to the, the owner that, you know, that she will, you know, need to obviously, you know, put more care into the aesthetic and having it match what the community wants. But it sounds like that, I'm guessing she understood that already. But I think that we need to step back and from this position that we have never, we, we, we okay things a lot.
Councilman Aaron, Rachel?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I first want to say I do deeply appreciate people who step up and invest in our community. And, you know, I, I think that we need to appreciate that, there's, that lot has been vacant. I do think, you know, as someone who helped write the, the Climate Regeneration Plan, there's no, there's no way that this, that an auto dealership is going to fit with that plant. And I don't think we should undermine something that we in fact already have. And this experience has taught me that, you know, there is a level of unfairness. And I think, you know, ideally, a city, when we wrote that plan, and we, it's a process and we're doing it kind of, you know, slowly, but we would, the city itself would have revamped all of, you know, got all of our ducks in a row with zoning. And now it's been our, luckily we have this community, this community that's very active and engaged, who has proactively brought this to us, so I want to acknowledge that as well. But I think we, we want our city to evolve and our decision making has to evolve with it. Cars, car dealerships have served our community and they can still serve our community. But do they serve us here and now? And I don't see a way that they do. So I recommend, I would positively recommend this change to council.
So my, my thought process is, a lot of times when we have public engagement on the planning board, it's when neighbors have seen a little yellow sign in front of a house and, and the first time they really are engaged with zoning. The project is, is before us and a lot of times it complies with all of the zoning requirements. And I see a lot of neighbor frustration because they, they feel like the planning board isn't listening to them, isn't hearing what they're saying, they don't like the development. But the planning board is really there to interpret the zoning code. And if things meet the code, then they're approved. And, and that's kind of the purview of the board. So I really like that the public is coming to us and saying, we don't like this zoning amendment. Or we don't like the zoning as is and we want to change it. And, and I think that's the way that you actually can get things to look the way you want them to look, is to change the code, because the planning board can't change the code for you. So I, I really like the public engagement and outreach here. I'm fairly neutral, honestly, on if we approve it or if we recommend it or don't recommend it. But I, I would probably lean towards recommending it just because of the public engagement on this topic.
Yeah, again, I can only echo the, the other folks up here about the engagement that we've seen, the testimony we've heard and not only heard, but we've all been privy to a number of emails and letters to the planning office and to the, the board in speaking in favor of this citizen amendment and a couple also speaking against it. So it's been a widespread voice, wide, over the past two, three, four weeks. And it is really hard to divorce this plot. And it is really hard to divorce this plot from the proceedings in many ways. I've been on the planning board for quite some time. We, back in the, in the zeros, 2002, 2004, there is a big discussion around the northern part of King Street and how to make that much more of a gateway also. We did a lot of zoning changes there and then a couple of big parcels just lay fallow because developers, for some reason, whether it was perhaps the Financial Times or perhaps their designs, their uses, it wasn't attractive to them. This plot too has just lie fallow for a long, long time. Many of the citizens would, they have some great ideas around sustainability, about housing, about park land. The city should do this. The city's not in a position to buy this parcel of land and work with it as they were able to do with the registry of deeds down the street where we were able to work that deal with the state and now the city can kind of through the RFP process can kind of help the developer develop that piece along what the city needs are. We've been very fortunate in the city around affordable housing down on Pleasant Street, more coming up on Bridge Road. So it's, it's not like it's, it's been a stalemate in terms of housing. I think I'm gonna, and I would probably vote not to recommend this change to the city, but to allow the planning board to continue to look at projects that come forward and take them on their own merit. And again, hope that applicants for that parcel or another parcel will bring forward some very creative designs, whether it's down at the lower end of Pleasant Street or at this part of King Street. I think we're very fortunate with some of the changes that have happened on King Street lately with the DOT roadway changes, the bike path extensions, the rain gardens to make it more walkable up to there. I don't want to say if a dealership or something else happens in that part of town that that will all of a sudden drop this curtain of walkability to this, to that area. So yeah, it's, it's been a very eye-opening experience for me over the past four weeks to engage in this with a lot of different people. And I appreciate that, that the interest that everybody's shown and, and really what Chris has said, this is the kind of way that the citizens get to provide their input to the city council, to the planning board, to city hall, through efforts like this. And I, and I hope to see it continue. So thanks. There's my two cents.
Hi, I'm, I'm a member of the planning board. One of the, I guess the newest member. So these, these zoning changes came about before, before my time. And I want to also just reiterate, I, this is amazing. This is, I really appreciate you all being here and coming forth with this amendment. I'm definitely leaning toward supporting it. I'm not sure that the car dealerships, I guess I'm feeling like they're not meeting the sustainable Northampton plan as a whole. And I think a lot of the other things have already been said. So I guess that's where I'm leaning now. I'm not a hundred percent there yet, but that's, I'm, I'm almost there. So I'll leave it at that for now.
Anybody? Sam, sorry, Janice about to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Elkins. Echoing what other people have said about how wonderful it is and actually with respect, I want to disagree with something that Sam said about that. I think it's really important and valuable that people come forward and make proposals of this kind regardless of where we are in the planning process, because it can be very difficult to envision what an abstract code means until we look at particular parcels and particular projects. But once an actual project is before us, as Chris said, then we need to implement the zoning as it exists. So I think that this is just the right time to be thinking about these kinds of questions. Yes, as this kind of particular project having inspired that thinking, but thinking about the zoning more comprehensively, not just about this individual parcel. I also think that the purpose of one of the goals of the moving to form-based code was to recognize that Northampton is changing and we are looking a lot of vacant storefronts and lack of housing. And so one of the possibilities that it brings forth is to think about the way that buildings look and are designed and feel divorced from how they're used so that our city feels good and vibrant and successful, but that it allows for lots of different kinds of uses because the traditional uses that were in a lot of areas, the parcels and buildings simply weren't being used for those purposes. So to disallow an individual use feels to me somehow inherently actually at odds with the nature of having form-based code. It's also very difficult in this context and in so much of what we do to balance the various goals of sustainability that Northampton has and that are built into our plan. So having a big concrete lot environmentally is not very good. Having a car dealership isn't great perhaps, but having jobs in Northampton that are walkable to public transit is. So there's always going to be a tension between that we can't achieve all things that we want from sustainability all at once in, in individual parcel or property or zone. It's almost impossible. So we need to kind of think comprehensively about the city and how can we inch toward our goals and accelerate toward those goals when we have opportunities to do so, but recognize that it, there will be trade-offs along the way that I think that is inevitable. So I, I I have mixed feelings about this. I think I lean toward not recommending it, but with that very much want to encourage that all of you, if and when projects that would fall under the special permitting process come forward, that you come back and you talk to us again about these very valid concerns so that we can consider them in the context of a specific plan and make sure that we're using the zoning to promote the city's goals as it is intended to do.
I actually think that there's something inherently dangerous about changing zoning rules. Because you want to just change them. I think that's why people are elected and you need to go through the process of, you know, campaigning and talking and, and, and spending the amount of time. You know, I'm definitely in the minority about this. I just think those types of sort of, you know, it's not, I don't like the legislation that comes out of, out of these types of pushes like, and I think that there's, there's a right, a right way of doing that. And this is circumventing that type of democratic process.
There, there is a reason that this process is, is allowed. So it's not circumventing. It's, it's baked into, it's part of democracy. It's, if it was circumventing, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be allowed. So I think there's, there's a wisdom to the, to having citizen petitions. And what I see here is that we're, this is an opportunity to align with our stated values and this is what the residents have brought to us. It's an opportunity for us to align and be more consistent. And we know what our stated values are. And so that's how I'm viewing this. And I don't want us to lose this opportunity.
Citizen petitions don't necessarily, are not necessarily democratic. There's lots of ways that, that people decide that they like that idea and they put in place. And they put an idea forward. This doesn't speak to my, my being against these types of citizen petitions is not necessarily against this idea. It's just not how I believe that you, that a society should be run. And I just think that, and there's something about it that's sort of bloggy and not, and not how, and not solid. Coming in front of you guys, forming, forming an actual law that speaks to, that, that tries to speak to all these different. I mean, we, we still have questions about what would be included, what wouldn't be included. We haven't even read the change that we're theoretically voting on. You know, it's just not how these types of laws should be written.
Yes, Rachel.
No, I just a process note that I was saying that the existence of the, the allowance of citizen petitions is part of democracy, whether you think that they, when they're, when they're carried out, it's democratic. What I'm saying is it's baked in. That's why it's part of it, the process of it.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm going to go ahead and speak here. So first of all, to anybody, I, I was, I was a little startled by the word vilification. I don't, I don't think that's what's happened here. I feel, I feel like I'm grateful for this exchange of ideas and, and even where there's differences of opinion. And I mean, I think we, one could debate the wisdom of whether or not this provision in state law makes for good policy and, and yields good legislative results, but it is in, it's in the statute. So from that perspective, I am, you know, we've you know, we sometimes have to deal with, you know, things well outside of any process in terms of how people want us to get things done. So I also want to say to the extent that any way that I framed it in terms of this is the parcel we're not speaking about, this is, was, it, that, it was not so much, I mean, we, we all know the impetus that brought us here and that it's that parcel. I, I didn't want us to go down a, a road of, you know, speaking directly to the, the property owner who I knew was in the room and it turning into something more like the, a hearing that would have been the, the special permit process who, which depending on how this goes, will happen later in planning board. So I didn't want that. I, I have to say, I, so I was on planning board when, when we first started working through the form-based zoning change. And then I, it was my tremendous privilege and honor to then be moving on to council to actually play a part in voting it in and, and making it into law. And it was the product of a long time of thought and as, as has been pointed out, in, you know, very good you know, outstanding city planning and, you know, a thoughtful process in terms of how that all happened. As far as this, and so we are talking about this parcel. One of the things that I find, you know, really intriguing about this is that, is that I, I can imagine ways that this business, this development, this particular proposal, you know, could happen and conform with the, the form-based zoning. And and I think it could, I, I don't, I personally, I don't, I'm, it's hard to imagine it happening in ways that didn't involve some amount of mixed use, some amount of things that are within the, the plan of not, not some amount of things, all, all of the things that are within the plan. I'm also in, very invested in the Gateway District and the idea that we are expanding the footprint of, of downtown Northampton and and what the form-based code and the Gateway District contributes to that overall plan. I'm, I'm 100% behind it. I voted to recommend it on planning board when we were addressing it there. I voted, I voted for it within office when, once I, once I, you know, came onto the council. I'm also troubled though by the idea that in general reactionary legislation is, is difficult. And, and it is hard to not see that as this, as being a reaction to a very specific, you know, to a very specific parcel, very specific potential proposal. And I do tend to agree that that's, that's really not how zoning is supposed to work. I think it's also important to know that whatever we decide, whether we recommend tonight, whatever the council decides that the, you know, this parcel, this particular owner will be well within their rights to pursue whatever legal remedies they have to keep, you know, to be able to develop according to the zoning that is in place. I'm not sitting here tonight saying what those, you know, not offering what those things might be. I think it's important that she came and engaged with this process and spoke to us and it is worth, it is, you know, it is worth considering. You know, what I'd hate to see is for us to do reactionary, a reactionary thing and, and change out a well-thought-out form-based zoning code and all of the policy implications behind that. And then have, you know, somebody in our community, somebody bringing in tax revenue, somebody employing people in the city, then exercise their rights as she's entitled to do and as no other investor has been able to do with this parcel. And, and we, we both have a car dealership where maybe folks didn't want one. And we've also foreclosed, you know, other, you know, other potential opportunities, you know, and maybe we do see that this is how, you know, we're shown how it can be done. So I, all that is say, I'm, I really am torn. I really, I really am torn. I mean, I understand the, 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 the reasons why people have come forward with this, with this proposal. And I appreciate the manner in which it has been done and the, and the way this conversation has gone. I mean, I think all things being equal, I, I probably would, would support, I would probably would support a negative recommendation and, but but I am a little bit torn. And so with all that being said, I, I don't know, I think I might be happier with a neutral recommendation, the council to let the wider council discuss it. But so, and I know that's disappointing to folks who brought this forward and I, you know, don't know, it's maybe disappointing to, to folks who, you know, want to see this, you know, this project going forward. But I don't know, I think at the end of the day, I think folks are going to be within their right to, to develop that property, you know, with, and what pursue whatever legal remedies they do. So we ought not do something reactionary. In, as it pertains to, you know, really thoughtful, well-thought-out, policy-driven zoning.
Are we, are we?
That's it. That was a many, many words, but that's, that's all I have.
And not to beat this dead horse, but I also am in this, this is a very hard decision and these are the moments where being a council really affect me because personally, I like Rachel would, would positively recommend this. I'm inspired by everyone's movement, but again, I don't want to be reactionary and I, I don't think I can support a positive and I don't think I can support a negative. So a neutral recommendation with discussion from the city, the full city council was kind of where I am leaning. But yeah, I don't, I don't know how you feel, Rachel.
Yeah, I just, I think what I'm hearing is a lot of fear, but we, we should not be afraid to codify our stated values and align them. And I don't think it's reactionary. I, I think what's reactionary is to kind of do the same old thing and expect this vision of a city that we keep describing to appear. And I think that I don't think it's reactionary. I think that we have, we have to go with what we, we've stated. And I, I know it's been, it was a well-thought-out code when we wrote it, but that wasn't written with the regeneration plan in mind. We haven't updated all those codes. I mean, it has, the auto, the auto not with, not, not, if you read the plan, we're still going over that. We were still, and it's not aligned with, it's, it doesn't align with the, the, the ideal use of what we want in, for, for our community, if we want to extend it into Gateway and downtown. So that's my reading on it. So anyway, I just think, I don't think it's reactionary to, to, to take a second look at this code. And I think it's, you know, I mean, it's great to say that we should trust our, and I do trust our planning board, but it's okay to codify stated values in the community and it's okay to respond to our community. So I, I would really like to positively recommend. So I, I would really like to positively recommend this. It sounds like, you know. My fellow counselors will not, and we can, the good thing is that we can have this discussion in our wider council and we can explain our, our point of view. So that's, that's always there. So that's great.
I agree, I agree with that. How about this? From legislative matters to have a motion for, um, any particular recommendation.
I will move forward a neutral recommendation.
I would second that. So I will, Laura's not with us. Oh, she's with us.
I'm here. Did you want a roll call vote?
Yeah, if we could have a roll call vote.
Okay, councillor Elkins.
Yes.
Councillor Perry.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
No.
Okay, so and councillor Jarrett's not present, so.
All right, so that will. Uh, yeah, so a pass will return to the council with a neutral recommendation from legislative matters.
So for the planning board.
For the planning board, uh, Sam had made an earlier, put a motion on the table. Sam, I, do you want to keep that on the table or? Which was to.
To reject the.
Not to, uh.
Not to.
To endorse.
Not to endorse. Thank you.
For recommendation, yep. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, motions have been made and seconded. Any more discussion, planning board members? All those in favor of not providing a recommendation to the city council on the citizens amendment? All those in favor? Or all those opposed? Two, no abstentions? Okay, so our form is four, so the majority vote, so, um, that moves forward. That's not a recommendation from the planning board.
Right, thank you. Uh, I think, uh, if I could have a motion to adjourn legislative matters.
I will move to adjourn.
Second. Right, uh, we're all here, so, uh, no discussion on adjournment. All put any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, all right. Uh, we leave the planning board to their good work.
So thank you very much. So the planning board will have a five to 10 minute recess while folks who are not involved in the. Next application from the YMCA. Will begin in about 10 minutes.
Let me actually pause it.
We're still a hybrid meeting with Zoom, um, and we're here in council chambers. We are, there are two items on our agenda at this point. One is the amendment to, uh, site plan by the YMCA on Prospect. And the other one is an A and R, a quick administrative, um, matter. If it's okay with the applicant from the YMCA, we're going to take that quick administrative matter first, the A and R request.
Can I say no?
Um, so, um, because, uh, um, the little background is Carolyn Miss from the, the director of planning. Cannot sit at the next hearing because she's in a butter to the YMCA. So we'd like to allow her to go home and have some family time. So she's going to walk us through this A and R request.
Okay, so is approval not required, which means subdivision approval is not required because there's, um, frontage along an existing street? So this is in Florence, um, it's a parcel with, um. Over, um, about, uh, almost 200 feet of frontage. So the request is, um, to divide it into two lots. So the minimum frontage requirement is 50 feet each lot. One lot has 71, one, another lot would have 86. So, um, the, the, um, vote that would be necessary is a vote to endorse the plans as not needing subdivision approval.
I moved to endorse this A and R on Garfield Avenue. A second.
Votions have been made and seconded. Any discussion of on the A and R on Garfield Avenue? All right, all those in favor in the endorsement? Okay, anyone opposed? And one abstention? All right, thank you very much.
I apologize, it's my mother's birthday and I had to go and call her, so.
Okay, so at this time. Nope. Does anyone have the agenda in front of them? I haven't found it. Would you just read off?
Yeah, so it says, request by Hampshire Regional YMCA for site plan amendment to waive maximum light levels up to 12 foot candles. At 296 Prospect Street, Northampton, map ID 24C dash 19.
Very good, thank you. And is there a presentation?
There is, and I will try to be brief. Thank you for your. Um, Jeff Spire from the Berkshire Design Group here about the answer YMCA. Um, this is following up on a special permit that was granted back in 2005, I don't know the name, uh, year 18 or 20. No, it wasn't that.
No, wasn't that long ago?
Yes, so 22 maybe.
Yep.
For some site improvements, um, this, the project overall was going to be developed in phases. Um, they just completed the first phase, which was the pavilion, um, off the, um, west end of the, uh, existing structure. This was, you know, an open air, um, open air, um, structure, um, you know, adjacent to the existing building. To provide space for, um, you know, outdoor exercise and expansion of some of their, um, classes and, um. You know, just offering the program, um, overall. And so, um, this has, this structure here has been built, most of the improvements up around the parking lot. Um, new sidewalks have been built. And we anticipated that there was going to be some need for lighting under there. Didn't really know what that was going to be at the time of the original permit. Lighting ordinance then changed to limit, um, the number of foot candles outdoors to five, which necessitated our need to be back here. Just because the way they want to use this space for, um, and these are just a couple of images of the completed, um. Pavilion structure, um, off the, uh, off the end of the building. So the top image is from Massasoia. And the, um, the, the, one in the bottom is from, uh, it's right next to Donovan's foyer, it's a parking lot, uh, across from Charles Park. And so, um, yeah, the hope is that, um, and the goal with the, with, with this space was to, you know, offer a, um, a new outdoor space for, for some of their program. And so during the, you know, the sort of off the swing seasons when, you know, it's, it's darker, they did, um, did have some intent to put light underneath. And so. The request is an amendment to waive the five foot candle maximum, just because of the limitations. It really offers underneath this pavilion for the, for his intended use. We're looking to, um, we're, we're requesting a waiver to allow up to 12 foot candles, which is, um, you know, what's shown. And you can see in this lower image, it's really where the red is, right tight up against the building, um, right underneath the pavilion itself. As soon as you get beyond, um, sort of the footprint or the pad where it is, light levels drop off pretty quickly. I can show you, so you can see, you know, sort of at the edge of, um, the structure, it's down in the two threes. You know, most, most of the way around. And so the higher light levels really are concentrated, um, right underneath, closest to the building. Um, and under the fixtures themselves, where you see a couple that get close to about 12 foot candles. These are all 27, um, 2700 K temperature lamps. So, um, in regards to, you know, just the current lighting ordinances, those, these, these lights, um, do have those temperature ratings. These are, you know, very cool LED linear fixtures that will be up underneath the, um, up underneath at the canopy. And, um, yeah, I think, you know, in general, um, as was submitted with the application, the intent is not to light this, you know, beyond the. Certainly the hours operation for the Y, but also, um, you know, if there aren't activities or programs taking place out there, there's no need to light it. So it will only be lit during, you know, those periods where there's a function or a, a class taking place out there. And so, yeah, these, um, again, hours of operation, um, were included in the, in the application. But, you know, generally 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, really the only need to light this space would be during, um, you know, times of year when, uh, when light levels are particularly low with the, you know, the tail end of that, that period. So. Yeah, I think, um. There's, you know, just a reference side, you know, you recognize that five foot candles are very low, very low level. Completely understand and respect, um, you know, the, the desire to minimize light levels. You know, as a walking in, as an example, just the right underneath these front scotches that become in the front door are about 10 to 11 foot candles as a reference. It's not overly bright, um, as soon as you walk into the foyer, it jumps up to about 25 to 30 foot candles. So it's a fraction of that, of that level. And, um, you know, we've, we've been going back and forth with the lighting representatives and the electricians. Who have, um, you know, sort of put up a little bit of opposition to, uh, this low of the lighting level just based on their, you know, current standards and their, you know. So where the, the world that they operate. So, um, you know, we were fortunate to get them to find out manufacturer and, uh, um, contractor that was willing to, you know, work that fixture. Have a picture that was both 27K because that was a special order for this, these fixtures. But then also just, you know, uh, with the lighting rep to, to really cut down with light levels, uh, as much as possible, so. Request.
And I just wanted, so I'm, I'm reading some of the conditions that we had on that special permit previously. So, uh, two that stand out to me was photometric plan showing compliance with the zoning. And I'm sorry, it's very blurry because I don't have good reception, which somehow makes my picture blurry here. It just went away. Oh, boy. Photometric plan showing compliance with the zoning, including glare. Parentheses, lamps shall not be visible from outside the pavilion. And parentheses, so I think that's what you're trying to show here. So all of these, um, lighting fixtures are kind of tucked up into the beams. So you don't directly see any of the lights.
And each linear fixture is also, there's a sort of encased with a, you know, shield itself. So the only lens that's, you know, really. Um, casting any light is, is directly under.
Okay, and then the, and then another one of the conditions was pavilion lights shall be turned off between. 9:30 PM and 5:30 AM, which I think you were saying, I think those might be the Y's operating hours or close to them. And then you're saying the Y will probably also shut them off when it's not in use otherwise. But those are the hours that they definitely will not be on. So I just wanted to put that out there for everyone, uh, at our hearing tonight. So they understand that that's kind of a, a baseline for the recommendations. Another thing I was looking into, and Sarah, you might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this plan was approved. Just prior to our joint hearing with legislative matters where we, um. Endorsed the new lighting ordinance to city council. And then it was voted in by city council sometime after that.
Right.
So this whole amendment happened prior to that.
Well, go on.
So the, the planning board granted this permit in December 2022. So discussions about the lighting ordinance weren't happening, but it, it wasn't passed for some time.
Right, so, so the current lighting ordinance was not in place when.
When this was approved, correct.
Approved. So, um. So to me, uh, compliance with the zoning ordinance at that time, I think was five foot candles. I think the current zoning ordinance now is three foot candles. So if we were to make any amendments to this. Plan, it would be from the lens of three foot candles and then going up to 12. Whereas as you have it right now, in your approved. Thing in your hand right now is five foot candles. So.
Thanks for that.
Baseline, you, you already.
Jason, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't certain what the, the whole part of it.
Right, but I just want to say that for everyone, for all of our benefits. So you, you currently can do five foot candles and now the zone, now our new lighting ordinance is three foot candles in the zone.
And, and right, and I would, so the amendment, then this, this mini application would need to abide by the current lighting standards. Could you, do you have a way of telling us how tall that ceiling is? I know it's a slanted ceiling, so there's two different heights, but even though the linear lights are tucked up on the beams. There's still quite a way up there, right?
Yeah, I mean, uh, the upper one is probably all the, the, the tallest end is probably all of 20 feet or so, yeah.
And the other one's about 17 or so, 16 or so.
Yeah, oh, 14, yep.
And these are, you did say that these are shielded.
Yes.
So, I mean, I, I know that we're going to talk about three to five to 12, but, um, we. They are shielded so that therefore not allowing any what we call glare to escape. It's just a level of lighting that's, that we're going to be talking about.
Any other questions before we open it up to the public? Maybe you or someone on your team could speak again to the kind of uses in this aeronazium? It's, it's not cro-saying, it's not small.
No.
Detail work.
Julie can certainly speak more to it, but I anticipate, I, I understand that these are intended to be, you know, uh, yoga classes, um, you know, flyies classes. You know, there may be some exercise classes. There is a, uh, you know, a box of fitness equipment at the end of the, this pavilions that, um, you know, um. People have access to, so there may be areas where it's just, you know, individual exercise, you know, but, um. Yeah, I think it's, you know, just a space where people need to be, you know, aware of their surroundings and seeing their feet and. And the equipment that they're using.
Thanks. Other questions? Well, let's move on to public comment. Again, we're on both Zoom and here in council chambers. So we'll go back and forth. Is there anyone here in council chambers who would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the applicant, the application? Right there?
I'm Don Darnell. So if you've heard me speak before in support of the, the lighting ordinance change, and I'm very grateful to all of you who participated in that and endured. The public commentary and stuff, and I guess, um. Fundamentally, I mean, the most important thing I think to be attentive to and keep in mind is that. There was a great deal of thought put into the new lighting bylaw, um, as well as the previous one. And, uh, this body as well as city council, uh, had a lot of deliberation. There was opportunity for a great deal of public comment, and I think that's important to respect. And I, I'm here to encourage you to maintain, um, that respect, I guess, for that, uh, restriction. I do understand that, that perhaps, um, the previous lighting standard applies. I don't really know what your rules are in terms of what has to be in an application case. But that's, that's what I'm suggesting. I'm a big fan of the YMCA. My partner teaches swimming out there. I think it's a very important part of the community, uh, uh. And should be given special attention. I think in this case, special treatment isn't really warranted, um, because I, I. Um, because I, I disagree with the, the premise that adequate lighting for the kinds of activities proposed in this pretty cool outdoor center, uh, needs to be above five foot candles. Um, uh, I, I realize that that school of thinking has been around for a while, but I just don't think it's the case. Um, so I haven't had a chance to look at the particular, um, fixtures or site plan or anything like that. I do have a background in electrical engineering and I've spent some time working on lighting policy issues and, and practices and that sort of thing. And so I don't come completely uninformed. Uh, but, uh, I would, I would encourage you to look very carefully at, um, how those standards really probably could be met without violating the, the safety and ability of activities to be undertaken in this area. And also look carefully at those fixtures and the kind of shielding, given the, the height of the mounting, um, uh, the potential for unintended glare, as well as the new lighting along those sidewalks. The walkways, I think, are also proposed as being updated. Uh, the lighting in that around the Y outside is really considered just kind of terrible. There's a, a lot of glare concerns there. So any opportunities to, when they're upgrading to, um, I, I would hate for opportunities to be missed to improve on that and not have a deleterious impact on the neighboring community as well as people walking through there. Um, I did submit something in writing that has a little bit more detail and I, I don't want to just, you know, hog all the time here, but I, I had to submit it kind of late because I didn't know about your meeting until uh, after four o'clock, actually, when, when I think that was due. So I don't know if you got that material, but I hope you'll, you'll, you will take, consider it.
Thank you very much. Do you, can we switch back to the Zoom screen? Or is that under? Great. So just for a moment, we'll check in to see if there are any chats from, any comments from people. Again, people who are on Zoom, they don't come to the podium and speak, um, but they, they give their comments through the chat room.
Uh, there is nothing in the chat.
Okay. So we'll come back to council chambers. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Please do.
Please state your name and your street as well. I'm Jordy Harold and I live at three Massasoit Ave, which is a few feet off of, uh, Massasoit Street. And I have a direct view of the Y from all of the westward facing windows of our home. And I've been there for 22 years. We're, uh, participants with the Y. At times we've been members of the Y and feel like we're good neighbors. Um, my, my concern in this, as I think, you know, the, the Y needs, needs to do what it has to do to run its programs and we're thankful that they're there. But my request is that this not be lit up, um, when it's not in use. Um, I think we've heard here that there's an intention that it not be lit at all after nine o'clock at night, but we'd like to see that codified as opposed to an assumption or an intention. And, um, if there is a need to light it, you know, with like low pathway lighting at night or something like that, so that it's, uh, you know, not a, a dark hole on their campus. If there's a safety concern or something that there's, I don't have an objection to that. But when I, um, reached out to planning and said, well, you know, I'm not a total layman, but what is 12 foot candles? They said the, a good example would be the canopy at a major gas station. So I think myself and probably other people in the neighborhood, I know I've spoken to the people at a 99 Massasoit and the people at 93 Massasoit who all feel like we don't need the glowing spaceship there if it's not in use. So, um, would just like to request that it not be lit, uh, other than when it's not in use, unless it's going to go back down to that three or five foot candle level. And I would also comment that, um, I want to say it's not disingenuous, but saying that, that it doesn't spill at 12 foot candles outside the fixture doesn't mean that you don't still see the glowing orb from everything that surrounds it in the neighborhood. So that's my input.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else? Yes.
Hi, I'm Betsy Yount. I'm at 94 Massasoit. So we're directly beside the parking lot. And so our bedrooms are there, our deck is there. We, if we go out on our deck, we are seeing the aeronasium and, um, we're raised up and with, if we're in our backyard, we see it. If we're on our deck, we see it. And so sight and sound is very concerning for me because it's long hours. It's very early. It's quite late. You hardly get eight hours of, uh, downtime. Um, so I, I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm, um, for, I, I do not really want more light. I think less is, is better. And, um, for the sake of, uh, it's a residential, we're in a, it's, it's a business next door, but we're, we're the residents that are trying to live and, um, and get some health and peace of mind too. So I am not for the, the lighting.
Thank you.
There's someone in the chat. Did you want to do that first?
Thanks for.
I'm, I'm not seeing anybody in the chat.
It was showing up.
Oh, the hand raised. You have a different view?
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not seeing it in mine, like the chat.
And I logged out of Zoom after. Hold on.
Not there.
It's not there. Well, we will turn it over to Brett Constantine, who is waiting patiently to say something. Um, do you need to unmute?
Um, are we doing just chat?
Oh, that's right. Thank you very much. No, I'm, I'm, yeah, it's from, uh, the, the previous meeting when we were allowing people to speak. I haven't switched my brain to this. Brett, you, Brett, you need the chat.
Can't read the chat, then.
He thinks there's a chat in there.
I mean, we can see that there.
We can, it says there's.
Already there. You, if you look on the board behind you. So.
But Sarah can't access them. Hold on, I'm going to go there.
Somebody else.
Yep, yep.
They're not visible there.
There we go. Okay.
Do you want a microphone, Sarah?
Um, there, I think there's too many hosts. I think that that's what the issue is. So let me just go over here where I can see a little bit awkward. So, uh, I live next to the Y at 86 Massasoit Street. Uh, Spencer Gacy Bates, my concerns on the proposal is that the ambient light of the YMCA is already quite bright. Happy to comment via video chat. Uh, however, my comments are that the actual light produced by the YMCA automatically begins at 5:00 AM. This is done throughout the year and continuously without a break. Uh, additionally, it seems to occur when the YMCA is not actually open, the light output, even without direct glare, is quite substantial into my house without being able to see the.
Here. I mean, you know, I can't see it, so can't hear.
Uh, so additionally, it also seems to occur when the YMCA is not actually open, the light output, even without direct glare is quite substantial into my house with the, without being able to see the actual lights.
Okay.
And then, uh, Brett Constantine on Willow Street, thank you for your work. I ask you to deny the request for a waiver. The five foot candle limit seems to be quite sufficient for the activities appropriate for that space. When it's a darker time of year, it's also a colder time of year and ac- activities that will be more limited anyway. I think that's all. I don't see anymore. But this, this is very awkward.
Great. Did well. You came to in the clutch, Sarah.
Thank you. Welcome to our world.
There were also at least, I want to say 10 to 12 other correspondence with the planning board and, uh, that we all read and they were sent to the planning office, by and large, mostly, um, representing people who are not in favor of a waiver to increase the lights to 12 foot candles.
There were a few in the folder that were in favor of the proposal.
Thank you. Um, so there was a lot of other, uh, correspondence, but those people aren't here at the meeting, either by Zoom or in the room.
Oh, my name is Tamara Cupfer, um, at 117 Massasoit Street, which is directly across from the Y parking lot and our, um, living room looks out on the new aeronasium. Um, I have a couple of questions first. Um, I want to know whether the lighting, um, uh, regulations, if you have different regulations for residential neighborhoods versus commercial neighborhoods. I know, um, one of our neighbors just mentioned that, um, that 12 foot candles, that you'd see them on King Street, you know, at a gas station. But I'm wondering in terms of like the five foot or three foot, is that also, is that currently what the regulation is on a place like a commercial street like King Street? And whether there's any, um, you know, particular regulations for a residential neighborhood like Massasoit Street.
No, they're all pretty much flat across the board. Um, now many situations you'll see on King Street now are grandfathered in. We're not asking anyone to replace their lights, um, but residential areas, business areas, commercial areas are all under the same guidelines.
Is that true under the new ordinance?
I believe so, yes.
Really? It's all?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
So I would just like you to, you know, think about the fact that this is really, other than the Y, an entirely residential neighborhood. Um, and I would also ask you, um, to deny the variance. I think that you have, you know, put a lot into choosing, you know, what the lighting regulations for the town, um, you know, for good reason. And I think, you know, we're worried about light pollution, but also, um, just having, you know, the, the lights, um, you know, going into our, into our house at, um, even if it's, you know, till nine o'clock. My neighbor also couldn't be here right next to me. She has, you know, young children and was also concerned just about, um, the lights in the evenings.
Thank you. Um, earlier in the hearing, Chris read off the conditions from before about the condition to turn, the lights would be turned off by nine 30. Um, w- with any of the conditions that we put on an application, you know, they're not enforced by the planning board, but it's up to the neighbors, say, to make a request to the, usually the building inspector, um, if the conditions aren't being met by, uh, either a resident or a business. Um, so that is open to residents to kind of complain about situations. Anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor? Or in opposition to the request?
My name is Andrew Soromek. I live at 117 Massasoit, which is, uh, she's a home with my wife, Tamara. We live directly across the street. And before I start, I have some photographs that might give some context to where we're coming from. Can I offer these to you?
Sure. You could pass them around the, the room. Yep. And then we'll also pass them through the audience. So the applicant can see them.
I, I was looking for your email address. I couldn't find it otherwise. So I, uh, my wife mentioned that the, uh, new lighting would, uh, go straight into our living room, would also, uh, be shining directly into my daughter's bedroom. At night. The proposed lighting is not compatible with residential neighborhoods. And I also want, uh, a lot has been said, but I want to talk about the, um, what a foot candle means. So, um, the current, I happen to know something, I've learned something recently about, um, lighting levels, uh, in another context. Um, but, uh, the contemporary measurement is, is lux. So, uh, three foot candles doesn't sound like much, but 300 lux sounds like more. Um, I believe that the, uh, the Y's proposal is to illuminate the, uh, the deck of the, um, of the facility to 1200, uh, 12 foot candles, which is 1200 lux. And to put that in perspective, um, the light, recommended lighting levels for a surgical theater is 10 foot candles or a thousand lux. So I don't think that's necessary for yoga. Uh, and I, um, and I agree with what everyone said about having the lights, uh, either off or, or dim, uh, during, uh, during the program times. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris, did your re, did your research on the lighting ordinance find something different about commercial areas?
Yeah. So the, if you're in, and I don't know what all of these stand for, but RR, I think it's like rural residential.
Oh, yeah.
SR, SC, WSP, those kind of more rural districts, then the maximum is point eight foot candles. If you're in the, the URA, BC, the PV, the NB, the OI, the GI, which I think are more residential areas, those are three foot candles. And then everything else, general business or central business district and those types of districts are five foot candles.
Thank you.
Now, that's the new ordinance that just got passed not very long ago.
Good. And this district and the YMCA is in?
Uh, so this is a residential district. So the maximum foot candles are three.
Three.
Okay. Right. But again, I think when we approved this plan, it was the old lighting dis, the old lighting ordinance at the time of approval.
Correct.
So what was it at the time of approval?
Uh, I would have to dig that up.
Okay. I think it was five.
Yeah, that's, that's why the five number.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you said that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. I'm, I know I said it. It doesn't mean it's right. Oh, yeah. Uh, no, I didn't. So I'd extrapolated.
Forgive us, we're still coming to terms with some of the lighting ordinances that have recently been passed. Um,
I, I do want to state for the, the record, and again, because we approved it under the old lighting ordinance, um, there also wasn't a 2,700 Kelvin requirement. So Jeff, I think if you're finding, if you're having trouble finding lighting fixtures, because that's such an odd requirement that we now require, um, you could probably find 3,000 Kelvin fixtures that might give you more flexibility in the lighting design.
But, yeah, although the, the maximum temperature in the zone, I think is 2,700.
Right. So.
So we're trying to meet the temperature, but the foot candle.
But it wasn't when it was approved.
Chris, the, the amendment has come in after the ordinance, the new ordinance.
No, no, I'm saying if you just go with what is already approved.
Uh, we would have a, we would have a brighter light, but not necessarily the foot candle measurements, you know, again, I, you know, speaking to the, like a typical sports field is about 800 to 1,000 foot candles. Like if you go to a Smith, you know, sports field at night, those sports lights are about 800 to 1,000 foot candles. The, the standing out here, I just made, when I came in, those, standing right below those scotces is about 10 foot candles. So just, yeah.
You're just saying, but that's why the city is changing.
I understand. I'm just, yeah, it's in reference to the, the surgical, yeah, that, that's, you know.
Hold on one second. I just want to make sure I'm on the same page with my planning board partner. So you're saying if they withdrew their amendment and they just went with what was originally accepted, they might be in a better position. Okay. Thanks.
But the board would then need to grant a waiver for the temperature.
Right.
But would we? Because we approved, we proved that back when it was five foot candles and 3,000 Kelvin. So if they were to do that, then they wouldn't even be asking for an amendment. Although we did also put a, a sting in there that, that said that they had to. Although we did also put a, this thing in there that, that said that they had to um comply with did it say current, did it comply with the um, lighting ordinance? And they had to prove that they were complying with it at the
Yeah, but I don't think we, we could put in a, in a condition that says you have to apply with a future
Yeah.
thing that
We decide to change in the future, right.
So, but their issue is really, it's not bright enough at five foot candles. So they're not, they still want to go for that.
Right. I'm, I'm just putting it out there that your, your approved foot candles right now are more than the ordinance, the current ordinance. So that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, the, the issue is more that, yeah, for, for people, you know, of, of this population that ranges from, you know, kids to, you know, elderly's with, with folks with disabilities that, you know, five foot candles is not bright enough to be doing, you know, what, what they need to do out there. It's, so. It's, it's really, you know, I think that the overall goal is to, you know, again, it's in these swing seasons this time of year when, you know, it's dark at, at, you know, nine o'clock or eight, eight o'clock, whenever they close. Um, to be able to offer a, you know, an outdoor, you know, class of some kind, you know, during that, you know, end of day period. Um,
Yep.
And
But during the day period from eight o'clock in the morning till four o'clock in the afternoon, even during the dark hours, there, there'll be plenty of other ambient light too, coming from.
Yep.
All right. Um, are there technical questions from the board? Um, I'm, again, we, we have this new term called bug rating. The, the, the shield that you talk about, I'm not sure if that's a protective shield for things that are thrown against the fixtures perhaps perchance, or if it's a shield that's actually um, casting down the light. I can't quite tell from the the cutout there. Um, when you use the term sealed, because in gymnasiums, it's often a seal that's about damage to the, the lamp itself.
Yeah. I mean, my understanding is I don't know all the particulars, but at least in my discussions with the lighting folks, that the the side shields on these are opaque or, you know, or, or um, you know, completely um, completely tran, uh, opaque. Uh, you know, solid, solid shields on the side to, to force and the, and the LEDs are up inside the top of the fixture. So there's a lens on the bottom, obviously, to diffuse the, the light so that it goes where it needs to, but the fixture itself is up at the top, you know, the, the, the linear fixture has some depth to it and the light itself is up in the top portion of it.
Yeah.
And there are solid shields, opaque shields, you know, that, that are on the two, on the four sides of it.
So George, to your point, I mean, we're still getting used to these new requirements. So a question for Sarah. What's in the memo is, lays out the goals of the light standards and says that we can only grant a waiver if, and only if the goals are being achieved, which are that the lighting systems are designed, constructed and installed to address offsite impacts and glare control, safety, energy efficiency and environmental impacts. So in this case, when we're considering a waiver, what we're looking at is, does the request for the waiver, does the lighting system meet these goals in this context? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so it's the applicant's position that it's primarily the safety issue that's driving this request.
Need for a higher foot candle, yes.
Jeff, can you share that screen again with the photometric plan? Um, we had a lot of discussion about the unfortunately, many of the, uh, the letters that we read had to do with the current lighting and around the lot, which may be less than appropriate perhaps for some people's um liking. But uh, I think your photometric plan shows that no, the light that leaks outside of the Aeronazium is below the five foot candles, but not at three.
Right.
Right.
Right. Yeah, at the, at the periphery, there are some instances. Um, yeah, a lot of these are, yeah, you can see a lot of these are in the threes. There are some closer to the building. Um, that are, yeah, five. And again, the majority of the higher light levels really are, you know, right along that inside edge. Right, directly underneath the canopy. As soon as you leave that, that concrete pad, they drop off pretty quickly.
Jeff, you don't happen to know any of the the existing foot candle readings in the Y parking lot or anything?
Parking lot, I don't know.
But that might be.
Mm-hmm.
Like our neighbors might be interested in what that number is. Just for comparison.
And yeah, for what it's worth, um, you know, this, like I said, we, this is a multi-phase project. This was, you know, the first major phase. Um, you know, next up on their docket is, is resurfacing the parking lot and these, and the, and the site lights. So they're trying to package all that up as a second phase. So um, we've started talks with lighting reps to understand, you know, what they might be able to do as an overall, you know, replacement on the site for all the lights, because it's a hodgepodge of a variety of different fixtures. Um, so trying to get somebody that can work with, you know, the, the existing bases and, you know, the conduit runs and electric loads that are there. Um, but the goal is to try and find, you know, a compliant fixture, obviously, that is much more compatible um, to do the entire site, um, as part of this, you know, second major phase.
Sounds like the neighborhood will appreciate that.
I, I really agree that I think the site lights are, are one of the major um, stumbling blocks.
Okay, all right. Um, nothing in the chat that we could tell Sarah? Yeah, okay.
I can read it because I can see it from here. From um, E. Spencer Gacy Bates. Again, I respectfully request that you deny the application so that I do not have to attempt to complain about a wonderful YMCA community to the city. I love and support the YMCA, but would respectfully request that the board simply deny the application.
Thank you. Um, last chance for comment from the council chambers from the public.
Just a, a quick
Would you come on up to the
This is really just a question you uh, brought up to the, the um requirements for an exception. And I couldn't find the, the ordinance of language, but I thought that that also referred to um, financial hardship also being required in order to uh, is that not what you see there? I just wanted to make sure that wasn't missed if, if that was the case of the language. I might be thinking of another part of the, of the um.
Yeah, I don't know of any language in our zoning that talks to financial hardships. That's so subjective. Uh.
Uh, well, it, it was pretty well specified. Um, but it, it might be in another portion. That's certainly possible. Uh, one other thing I just wanted to mention, um, Chris talked about the idea of, I'm sorry, maybe it's not Chris. Jeff, sorry, you're Chris. Um, the idea of the lens of these lamps, and I just mentioned about um, shielding and uh, the problem of potential glare. Um, when you have a fixture with the, uh, with opaque shielding that comes down and then a lens at the bottom of that, the lens, um, because it's a diffuser lens that they're talking about, um, it becomes the light source. So you'll have light going up to at least the horizontal and below. And so a big chunk of that, say 30 degrees down from horizontal, that ranges would, would be glare wherever those lights are not far enough recessed to, to come clear of the roof. Just wanted to mention those two things.
Thank you. Thank you. Please come on up.
I will also just note that it's 350 dash 12.2 outdoor lighting is the part of the code. And it does not say anything about financial hardship. I just checked.
So there's been some speculation about what the safe lighting levels are for, for the um activities like yoga. And I just looked it up. Um, there's one standard setting body for um indoor and outdoor lighting. It's called the Illumination Society, Illumination Engineering Society. And their recommendations for a gymnasium um, for um, gen, uh, for assemblies, it's 10 foot candles. And um, for general recreation, uh, it's 30. Um, so that's uh, directly um, below the below the uh, where the surface is going to be illuminated.
No, I don't understand. You said 30 foot candles is recommended?
Uh, that's uh,
When refute our
No, that's um, that's lux.
Oh, okay. That's lux. Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions from the board? Sir, most in the, close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
One second.
Good maiden section. Is there any discussion about closing the public hearing? Think we've heard enough from the applicant. All right, all those in favor? Very good, unanimous?
I move to reject the their uh, uh, waiver.
Um, so there's a motion made to reject the application for a waiver by the YMCA on Prospect Street. To exceed the, the current lighting limits. Sarah, second?
I second.
All right, any discussion? So then I, I, just to be clear, I think that what we're saying is that whatever was in our original um, decision regarding this application back in 2022, that those conditions will still be met, having to do with the turning off of the lights at 9:30 and the, the amount of foot candles allowed. All right. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Okay.
It's unanimous. Um, so, um, good luck in uh, illuminating that space. Uh, we certainly hope the Y is able to provide programming out there. Um, but we do want to abide by our new and our old lighting standards.
Thank you.
I move to close the meeting.
Sarah, do you have any administrative things for us?
I do not.
I second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded. And what I learned today is with adjournment, there's no discussion and no vote. So voila.